Good evening. I'd like to call to order the July 16, 2019 work session for the Texas School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge. By way of announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, we have all board members present with Mr. Navarrette videoconferencing in. I apologize for the climate in the room right now. As you know, we're getting the air conditioning serviced in this building. If the fans present a problem for anyone being able to hear the presentation, board members or audience members, let us know and we can cut them and try and muddle through. For recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, I turn it over to Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Ms. President. And this evening, we have three speakers. We have, well, actually, we have two speakers. One, we have KCBA architects to here to talk about the initial concept drawings and recommendations from the June 4, 2019 special meeting. To take any questions from the board, they're going to summarize their presentation for the public and for the board, and then seek any questions that you may have. And then, we're going to ask them to also provide a summary of the feedback that we received from the public survey, and give an opportunity for them to share with you what they believe some of the next steps are, and give you an opportunity to ask questions about those next steps. And then, we have Fadavia here to talk about the summer 2020 construction projects. So, without any further ado, we'll remain at the seats. You should have a presentation, a paper copy in front of you, and I will ask Mike Kelly and Jamie Oberling to come forward to the podium, and we'll get the presentation started.
I'll speak loud into the microphone to get over the fans. Thank you for having us back tonight. My name's Mike. This is Jamie Ober, and we have been working with you quite diligently over the last couple of months. Really enjoyed the process, working with you on the feasibility study to get to the point where we were last month. The goal for tonight, which is on our agenda here, is to review very quickly. We went from around 120 slides to 35, so we've drastically reduced, and I promised to go much, much quicker, through some of the highlights from June 4. And as Dr. Zerby said, we have a couple of slides to talk about the public survey that was part of that next step that we talked about on June 4. And then, we're going to talk about next steps moving forward from tonight as well. So, jumping right in, we've talked about in the past the location, the proximity, and the enrollments of the four existing K-4 elementary schools through your district. The K obviously noting that that's half-day kindergarten currently, a desire to move the full day. We talked about changes in education. You know, we're teaching kids differently because the workforce is different, and our schools need to be able to adapt. And a lot of times, our schools can, but when you're working with a design like Arrowhead, sometimes that's much more of a challenge. We talked about the effects of full-day kindergarten. When you take a class right now that we could say we can have 50 kids in, because essentially we have two kindergarten classes going through them, and we say, "All right, now we're going to go to full-day kindergarten," well, now that classroom can only hold 25 kids. So, there is a bit of an effect on the building's capacity through full-day kindergarten. So, the summary of all of that, first several slides there, was again, if the functional capacity of existing schools is impacted by the educational program that you have in them. Moving from half-day to full-day kindergarten is going to reduce the amount of capacity in those buildings. You're going to need more rooms to accommodate more full-day classes. And we talked about some district-wide housing growth that's going on throughout your district, specifically in the lower Providence area. So, enrollment's growing, curriculum is changing, and obviously, the desire to go to full-day kindergarten is affecting the building's capacities. So, into existing conditions. We talked about our focus with our architectural team and our engineering team, and Fadavia and their team looked at the functionality, the general conditions, code compliance, safety, energy efficiency, all of the things that we would think about from the physical attributes of the building, as well as the educational attributes of the building. The process of that, we walked through the buildings. We interviewed every single teacher at Arrowhead, spent a very long and very fun day meeting with everybody, listening to all of their comments, and we also participated in the three tours of some of the local new buildings. I know a lot of you were on those tours as well, so it was great to kind of see the before-and-after effects of those new buildings for those districts, and some of the things that were in those buildings that were kind of neat that we might want to do here, and some things that we saw about, "Well, that's great for them, but maybe not so much here." So, it was good to open up a good dialogue with everybody about those things. So, when we came to a summary of our kind of conditions of Arrowhead, we said, "All right, the exterior of the building has a lot of repairs and needs a new roof. We saw a lot of places where the bricks were falling off. There's numerous interior..." We're on page 10. There are a lot of interior repairs that need to be done in the building. The systems in the building, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all of that is, needs to be replaced. And certainly, we said, you know, the educational environment is very different from when a building was built in the '70s with open pods, you know, no walls, no doors, and things like that. It's just kind of a different day. So, when we made that grocery list of things that we would need to put into the renovated building, we're on page 11 now, the items needed for proper renovation, it started to look like a recipe for a new building. We need a new roof, we need new windows, we need doors, we need walls. So, how much of that are we getting to the point where we're almost building a new building anyway? So, that was part of the conversations about renovation versus new. So, the site and the traffic analysis, we talked a little bit about Level Road, where we've got some safety concerns there with the buses and cars, and everybody kind of coming on in the exact same spot, cars coming out on that same spot as well. So, we just kind of covered that area. We talked about playground spaces a little bit close to Level Road, which concerned some of the teachers, so we just brought that to everybody's attention as well. So, the question was asked, "How do we make the change? You know, what's the next step of renovating our spaces to a more conducive 21st century school?" So, we talked about a lot of factors to consider, educational disruptions during construction, educational compromises, what can we get in that existing building and still make it better, but what are we missing? Certainly, return on investment. You know, we're going to put a lot of money into the existing building, is it really worth it? And then, you know, a cost analysis between new and renovation. We talked a lot about the energy savings involved with renovating a new building and putting in a new system, but oftentimes, you're putting that new energy-efficient system into an old building. You can't really, unless you want to spend even more money, go in and rip out the insulation of the old building and put in all-new insulation. So, you're putting in a new system, but you're still wearing that kind of spring windbreaker in the middle of winter. Your jacket's just not very heavy, as opposed to the insulation qualities we can do in a new building. We talked quite extensively about the right sizing of the box. How big does this need to be? It's 52,000 square feet now without the mods. You know, that's about 6,000 square feet with, so right out of the gate, we have to replace the mods, and we know we have more classrooms we want to add for additional special needs groups, as well as learning support and new classrooms, kindergarten. So, we wanted to find out how big of a building we thought we needed ideally, and that was more about 81,000 square foot range versus the 52,000 that you have now. So, we know we need to, even if we're just trying to stay with what we have, we still need to build a quite substantial addition. So, we looked at additions, we said, "All right, we're going to look at considerations of the classrooms now that are all a bit of an odd size. You know, the gym and cafeteria combo's too small, we've got a music room that's in a storage closet. So, we've got some issues with that existing building. How best can we fix those?" So, we said, "All right, let's take a look at building a new admin space, maybe a six-classroom addition along the front." I think I'm on page 21 now. This was the renovation and addition option number one, that was adding about 12,000 square feet. That wasn't quite enough to get us the program that we wanted, so we said, "All right, well, we could add a new gym and build a 10-classroom addition on the side." That got us a little bit more closer to the goal for 500 students. And then, we said, "Well, really, we think with the enrollment growth, we should be looking at a school approximately 625." So, now, we've got to build an even bigger addition on the side of the building, and we can kind of see where we were, kind of struggling with some of the options to expand, where to expand, how to expand. And then, really looking at interior inside the building, we're only making it so much better. We're kind of compromised on some of the things that we're able to achieve there. So, that's what this summary kind of talks about a little bit there. Well, yeah, we're creating some new classrooms, and we've built a new gym, but the cafeteria's still a little bit smaller than we'd like it to be. Some of the classrooms in the existing part of the building are not in an ideal shape and an ideal size. There's still limited natural light that we're able to bring into those spaces. So, we did better, but we didn't really achieve everything that we may have been trying to do. So, in the new building options, we looked at the entire site, the setbacks that are part of the restrictions of where you can build and where you can't. And we said, "We've got about 5.9 or close to 6 acres of space that we could build behind the school." And we did talk about an option of whether we keep the modular trailers during construction or not. I think for ease of construction and transformation during that time, I think we would try to find a scheme that would work with the modular trailers staying there, because essentially, we'd have to move them or buy new ones or figure out some way to move those. So, our attempts in new construction are going to be to maintain those modulators until we're ready for the new school to come online. But we still have a lot of space back there. So, we started making some bubbles of, "Okay, we like the idea of a gym and cafeteria that's right-sized towards the front of the school. We like the idea of kind of kindergarten first and second grade kind of being together for those kids that are, you know, just starting out and learning how to read." But, you know, maybe we challenge the third and fourth graders a little bit more in some sections. And so, those are some of the conversations we have when we are walking through a lot of the buildings that we walk through. Like, "That would be neat, but maybe for the older kids." And we really like this idea, but that might be for some of the smaller kids. So, that's part of the design and thoughts that can go into the design of a new building. So, finally, that page 30 there shows the concept of the new site layout, which now, with the building more towards the wheel of the property, we have much more in the foreground there, that we can a little bit more safely and successfully separate parents and drop-off and bus drop-off. We would propose having buses come in and out one way, and cars come in and out one way. So, again, just kind of a concept. The comparison slide there on page 31 talks about all of the costs, all of the things we're accomplishing, timelines. You know, the renovation and add in option one was kind of just getting us right back to where we were. There's obviously a lot of disruptions. We weren't solving all of our educational program and things like that, and we were still at about $22 million. The renovation and add, again, there's for option 2A, there's two options for both of those. There's the 525 scheme and the 625 scheme, 625 kids. So, you can kind of see the difference in cost there, and then what the cost for new construction would be. It was important to note that the costs that we're showing are for total project, so that includes the building, includes the site, it includes a lot of money for contingencies, it includes furniture, includes all the fees and permitting and all that other stuff that it shows. So, that's not just the building, that's actually total construction cost. I was sharing with Dr. Zerby earlier, we have a new middle school that we'll get bids on this week. Upper Darby just got their bids in Thursday or Friday last week, and they were low. They were lower than what we're showing here. So, that's great. I'm going to keep our number where it is, but they were lower than the numbers that we're sharing here, so that's a good sign. So, again, we're going to be bidding at least a year after them, but it's still a lot lower than where people thought they would be. So, that's encouraging, that's a good sign. Again, I've said this a number of times, I'd rather be high today and you guys all thank us in a year than going in the opposite direction. Page 32 here just talks again about some of the differences in renovation versus new construction. Obviously, with new, we can start over. We can do every one of those things that we talked about in the buildings that we walked through, the things that would be ideal and perfect for your students at Arrowhead, some of the things that we like, some of the things that are, you know, "They did, and hey, great, we don't need that." But we can have those conversations, and we can really be starting with a blank canvas. There's a lot of advantages there. The last slides here on 34 is just talking about, I always like this slide for board members to think about, about the balance between the outcome and the investment. And there were a lot of comments in some of the survey pieces about those things. You know, "Let's make sure we're doing what is most cost-effective," and sometimes, that is building new. The amount of money that you would spend in doing a renovation project could be pretty close to new, and you got a shiner than what you already had when you were done. So, you really want to look at the balance of that investment and the outcome. So, the recommendations when we left it last month was, it was not recommended to renovate because there's just too many things that we would need to do to that existing building. That laundry list of things, or grocery list, I think I called it, of all of the things is almost a new building anyway. We said, "We think you should look to design a school for 625." We can design that, we're on bid day, we can decide whether it should be for 525 or 625. So, that gives us not only a year to talk about it and design it and document it, get approvals for it. If the bid numbers come back bad, we go, "All right, we'll pull back, we can go 525." Or over that time, if, as we continue to study enrollment, we go, "Yeah, you know what? We need that 625. We're going to need those extra classrooms." Great, we've got approvals for them, and we're ready to go. You don't have to make that monetary decision until the day we're accepting bids, which at this point is at least a year away. So, we felt, we did release the presentation on the website, we did solicit feedback, and we're going to talk about that in a second. And then, we talked about the thing that we're going to address with you tonight about moving forward with a preliminary design to come back to you guys next month to show you, here's what we think a new building in the back there could look like if you chose to move forward. So, the public survey, this is the first new slide. There were 534 response. That's a lot. That's really good. That's a really good, it may not seem like a lot, but that's pretty good for one month over the summer to get the feedback from a lot of people in the area, most of which were from lower Providence, so that was good. We added up strongly, agreed and agreed, and that was about 67%, and then, the disagree category was 26%. So, it was predominantly ticking towards agreeing with the new building. And we had spoken in the past with some of these surveys, it seems like 100% of the people that disagree take the survey. Not always 100% of the people who agree actually take the survey. So, the fact that it's 67-26 is a pretty strong showing of the public's understanding of not only the presentation that we gave last month, but the desire to move ahead with a new building. Those who disagreed, mainly their comments were about tax implications, which is to be expected. I think what we would do as you move forward with getting more information, getting more detail with the building, we'd have a better idea of costs, and then, we can share that with the financial groups and find out exactly what the financial and tax implications may or may not be for the project. The cost of new construction, it is very expensive. So is renovation. So, there were concerns about that, and certainly, there were a lot of comments about the status of Audubon. You know, "Why don't they just reopen that?" So, one idea may be addressing that at some point, to say, "Hey, listen, we closed that for a reason. You know, you think it's expensive to renovate Arrowhead? You know, it's going to be expensive to renovate that building as well. It's not as easy as just turning the lights back on." So, that may be something to consider, because there were a fair number of comments about that. The next page there highlights some of the comments from the 67% that agreed. I thought it was interesting, there was a very clear understanding of the need to replace the building. There were a lot of comments saying, "Yes, that building is in a lot of need, the roof leaks, you know, there's safety concerns, there's educational environment concerns with HVAC issues." So, there were a lot of comments back saying, "Yes, we are aware of the physical conditions of that building." Several comments about, "Hey, if you're going to spend money, do it right, and let's, you know, the more fiscally responsible thing to do is to spend a little bit more for a much better result." And certainly, a lot of people talking about, you know, "Hey, this is what's best for the kids, this is what's best for the teachers, and what's best for the community." Not only will our house values go up with better schools and better school districts, systems, there's ideas for where the school building itself, gym, art, music rooms, and things like that could be attributes to the community as well. So, that was nice to see, a good understanding of that from some of the comments back. So, next steps, as we said, if we'd like to get your feedback tonight from the survey, from the presentation, any questions that you have, we would like to essentially continue that study and take another month and come back with some ideas of what the building could look like behind Arrowhead. Instead of those little bubbles that we showed on the one slide, take some time. We have a meeting set up where we can meet with administration, meet with some of the principals, and say, "Let's take a first shot at what the design of this may actually look like. Come back and present that to you August 20th, which is your next work session. Have another breakdown of costs there, that we can update what we think the cost of that building would be." And at that point, look to see if you guys are interested in moving ahead, again, with the start of the design of a new school. The last slide I'll show you here is the schedule of what that would look like. And again, a lot of times, people think, "All right, we're getting started, we owe $30 million already." No, not even close. The start of that is essentially hiring an architecture and engineering firm, it's continuing to work with Dan and his group to say, "All right, let us start with the approval process. We're going to go and we're going to talk to lower Providence about building a school, what is the site work involved? We're going to start meeting with all of your teachers and the principals in much more detail about, here's a design that's actually a design now, it's not just a couple of bubbles. What do you think of this? Where should this be? Where should that be?" Continue to develop the drawings, continue to incorporate feedback from the board, from the community, and continue that collaborative process throughout the rest of this calendar year. And what it shows is you're really not going out to bid until really this time next year. So, you have an entire year of continual influence from the teachers, from the community, and from the board before you're putting drawings out to get bids. So, for those of you that may not be familiar, haven't gone through those types of projects in the past, the word "go" doesn't mean dump trucks are showing up. Even if you said "go" tonight, dump trucks probably aren't showing up until, you know, January of 2021. So, it's a while of approvals and documentation. There's a lot of time that we'll meet with you and go over designs and budgets, and again, solicit a lot of feedback from you, from the faculty, from parents, and from the community. So, perfect.
So, thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Let's take some questions from the board. Do you want to start on my right? If you're ready.
I know.
On my left.
Okay. Will Brown really first? Will Brown first?
You can hear me.
So, Mr. Navarrette, would you like to make a comment on anything that was shared this evening or back on June 4?
Yeah, I'm not in Asia, but thank you. This week. Yeah, I guess a couple of things. I think, you know, Mike, one of the most important things we're going to have to know as we go through this process is what the key levers are that we can throw to moderate the cost estimates that we have. Do you have an idea of that now? I mean, aside from square footage, right, which is obviously the big one, what are the other levers that we have to moderate a $35 million price tag?
Yeah, the first one, like you said, is square footage. The size of the building equals dollars. Another big one is site, and that's one of the first things that we'll dive in with our civil engineers, with Fadavia, to do a site analysis, find out what our stormwater management calculations and solutions need to be. The last place I like to put money into in these projects is in the ground, but there's a lot of money that needs to go into the ground. The idea of every droplet of rain that falls on your property has to stay there, and so there's money involved in maintaining that and making sure that our systems are well-designed. So, that's one of the first things we'll do, because that site cost number is the first one we want to attack and bring that down as low as we can. So, that's one of the big targets early on. Square footage is one of the things that we can start to talk about. You know, a lot of times, you know, an easy target is the gym. You know, an elementary school gym could be small, but if you make it a little bigger, now it's a community attribute, we can play youth sports in it. All right, well, there's a, that's a good debate, but we're spending a little bit more money there. So, all of those things, if we give a little bit there, we may take a little bit away from something else, and that's a great trade-off. That's the best thing that we can start to do as we dive into that schematic design phase, is attack the program. What do we need? How big do these really need to be? Is there space that we can take out of the building while we're also, you know, attacking the site to find out exactly what we need to do to provide adequate stormwater management for the site?
The other question I have, too, is around LEED certification. We talked a little bit on the tours about it. Can you share your thoughts on that?
Yeah, we do LEED certification quite a bit. Usually, it is, what LEED is, is a third-party agency that comes in and says, "Your building meets a certain level of sustainability." It's by a series of points, they're certified, they're silver, gold, and platinum. And it's a great methodology and a great tactic in design, whether you're actually going for certification or not. To go to certification, there's a lot of paperwork involved, there is money involved in doing that, and there's a lot of choices that you're going to have to make that you may not want to do to get more points. You may have to choose a mechanical system that mechanical guys don't want to use, but we need to use that because we can gain a few more points. Something like geothermal, which is a great system, but there's a lot more maintenance involved, and sometimes, it may not be as energy-efficient as even high-powered or high-efficiency gas systems. So, it's a great model for a good design. We use it whether you decide to go with certification or not. I'm a LEED-accredited professional, and I'll be the first one to tell you, if there's not a grant involved with you getting LEED certification, I don't know that it's worth the monetary amount for you to go through that process. But really, at the end of the day, you're getting a plaque on the wall, which is great, but you're going to spend a little bit more money to get that plaque on the wall, and you may have to make decisions forced upon you than, you know, sitting down as a group guy. You know what? This is very energy-efficient, this is going to save us money, so we do other things we want to do, but this is a better system for us.
And then, the last question is, can you talk about your own experience, like your firm's experience? You know, what we're talking about here is either a major renovation to the building or building another building while the current building is still in operation. Have you guys done that before?
Yes, and we can share with you a couple of different examples. The most recent was Hopewell Elementary School in Southern Lehigh. Built that one right behind the existing school. When you look at the new building, it's laid out, and it looks like there's a little notch, which doesn't look like anything. Well, that notch is there because that's where the existing building used to be. Still a brand-new design, still works perfectly, but we just shaped it that way to stay away from where that building used to be. A lot cleaner to do, I think on your site, it would be very similar, where parents and buses, every operation would happen exactly like it does now, and we would bring construction guys in from the side, from another entrance. And when the building is done, you move in, that's great, they flip the construction to the other side of the site, and they have to demo the new building and provide new parking. That's actually, sometimes, the most inconvenient phase, is when the new building is done and you're still trying to take down the old building and build the new parking lots and things like that. But safety and security of your faculty and your students is always the biggest concern, and honestly, with a new building, that's easier to do than in renovations. In renovations, you're trying to build swing space, so you're saying, "Oh, let's put some modular trailers over there so we can move this wing of the school out so kids can go over there." And now, I've got contractors working in areas of the building that we're segregating from the rest for security reasons, but they're hammering, they're banging things around, and they're right behind a piece of drywall doing so. So, the disruptions are there, it can be done, and it's done successfully all the time. It's just, it is more disruptive.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I want to do is just talk to somebody at Hopewell and just see what their impression was and how that went, but I'll let everybody else ask their questions.
Well, Hopewell did that in Southern Lehigh. I know Hollowwell, that wasn't our project, but they finished one up two years ago, three years ago, in Hepperal-Horsham. And we can get you a list of a few others where they built new buildings on the same campus as an existing building, and then, just, like I said, flipped the construction site and moved on. And North Hampton, we just did that with a new middle school. We're doing that right, actually, we have 1, 2, 3 right now under construction that are doing that. When would you...
Yeah, I think that would be great, just from a lessons learned perspective.
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Navarrette?
No, no, thank you.
I'm going to ask bigger questions, and I'll let some others ask some of the smaller questions I know they have. Not smaller, but more number of questions. I'm going to start with the end, the comments. I read every single comment, I had the time already, which I did, but I had a question about the percentages, because I noticed a couple repeats. So, were the repeats taken out when we did the percentages? I mean, it's not huge, but I didn't print out the comments, so I didn't number them, but there were at least half a dozen. I just was curious.
That's a good point. I saw those, too. I read them as well.
But I had a question about the percentages because I noticed a couple repeats. So were the repeats taken out when we did the percentages? I mean, it's not huge, but I didn't I didn't print out the comments, so I didn't number them. But there were at least half a dozen. I just was curious.
That's a good point. I saw those too. I read them as well. The there were a few. I I didn't take them out. I just grabbed that summary sheet that said, here's how many yeses, here's how many noes, and presented it that way. But you're right. So I'm sure, like in any survey, there's a margin of error.
Huge, but I didn't add it up. And then the other thing about the comments you brought up, Audubon, I noticed that a lot as well. And yes, we can address it at a meeting. It would probably take about five minutes or less. I was curious if there's any way to respond. I didn't know if it was anonymous or not, or if there was email, to just shoot every single person who said that an email saying, yeah, Audubon's in the same shape, if not worse.
Well, we don't have the ability to do that exactly. But Ms. Kelly is Amanda Kelly is going to be going through that survey results. And anywhere there's a question, we're going to pull those questions out and see if we can't answer them. And then just send something out to the entire community and let them know that questions that were raised during that that they're going to be on the website.
So and maybe that's a good point. Obviously, if they got the survey, they are getting the emails or the postcard. Because I would like that that address because it was brought up a lot in the comments, but it's also a simple answer. Because people don't watch these meetings. They don't come to these meetings. So I would really like, I mean, I know it's not as simple as Audubon's in the same exact spot as Arrowhead, but kind of sort of is. I know we'll have a better answer than that. And I wanted to just quickly, while I had a chance, address the 26% that did disagree. Because there's some based on some of the negative comments that were directed to the board. And in full transparency, there were some comments directed to the board. To the 26% who disagree, we value your opinion. To the small percentage that attacked us in general, just FYI, not one person sitting at this table will benefit from a new Arrowhead other than the fact that it benefits children in our community. So I think that's just I did want to address that so that there's no misconceptions. Not one person at this table will have a child that attends Arrowhead at the current time. I mean, who knows what the table could look like? I know I know why the Fidavia or not the A, our original facilities report said 12 to 14 million dollars in renovations. And I kind of understand why it's 10 to 12 million higher than that because fixing an HVAC system in a singular way is different than, like you said, pulling out fiber, all that. But in a nutshell, can you repeat again why there's such a difference between the renovation cost and the facility report of 12 to 14 million dollars, please?
I I think some of that is time. There was a time gap between the two. I think what you were looking at in the renovation piece of that was it's the renovation of 51,000 square feet. That's just the existing building. And we're talking about in every scenario, expanding that even more. So I'm sure it didn't have new construction costs within it. And there's there's less that you can do. I mean, you could, you know, say tomorrow, hey, let's renovate Arrowhead, and here's $10 million. Okay, like there's we're going to do a smaller amount of things. We're going to probably just fix the HVAC and walk away. So you can do less by pulling those things back. But I think I think some of that gap could be, like I said, time. You know, just the 2008 inflation in construction alone was massive. And scope, you know, it's 51,000 of renovation versus what we're showing, which is 51,000 renovation and another 20 some thousand in in addition to get that program up to to where it should be and where the district is asked it to be for that school.
I have a couple more quick ones. We mentioned if we rebuild or even renovating, it all wouldn't be finished until 2023. And at the last property meeting, we didn't talk about this. So I just want to reiterate it to the property chair and while Fidavia is here and everybody else. You know, between now and 2023, you know, we're not happy with the way Arrowhead is. And I know we're working with Arrowhead, but I do want to just make sure that 2020 that between now and then, the school is being cared for. Like, I know we just replaced the fixed the chiller because it had to be done. We're not leaving it alone. But I know we dealt with some issues last year. I know there were concerns about the fire. So just, you know, I just would like to maybe at our next property meeting or our next or the one after that, whichever one makes the most sense, just talk about what we do to keep this building safe and as positive as it can be until the the repairs or rebuild happens. That's that.
That's a good point. You've got three years.
Yeah.
So there's we've seen school districts start to buy furniture. If you're going to buy anything for the old school, make sure it can move to the new school. But you're going to there's going to be repairs that you need to make. Now, they'll know, hey, duct tape it back together because we're going to get rid of it in a year. So you're not wasting you're not going to go buy a new boiler for it now because you know you're you're looking to replace it.
And I know we did, like I said, the chiller. I know we did improve security. I know we're doing things, so I know we're not ignoring it. But anything that we can do to keep it as positive, as safe, and I know we will do that, but just to reiterate that. And then there are two other things, which are, one's repeat. But I would feel better, and it doesn't have to be a big deal, but I would really feel better before we make a decision just to go look at a reno. At a building that, I mean, all the buildings we went to see, all the superintendents said they had to do this. And I I know that that's what everyone's suggesting, and I respect that. But for me to make such a big decision, I just need to go see a reno. I could do it on my own. I'm not suggesting that that's what you're asking me to do. But if we could do that, even if it's a small group of us, even, you know, when the superintendent of another sending district to the tech center told me they renovated and he regrets it, or not regrets it, but would have preferred to rebuild, I would like to see a reno. Just because I want to see what that looks like in modern day.
I think we could show you Sladington Elementary School. We took a school up there last year up in Northern Lehigh, so it's just north of Allentown.
Yeah, I mean, I told I get what the suggestion is, but for $10 million and for the good of the students, it might be best, but it would just make me it would help me do my homework.
I can certainly do that. Well, we'll send that off along to all of the, we'll call it the Arrowhead review tour group and have all that participate that I can. So we'll definitely set that up. I think I think we'll do that, and then we'll be able to report back. Did we want to try to do that in the summer here?
Well, I need to.
We're going to have to do that.
Agreed, and I mentioned it at the last meeting, and maybe I should have called you individually. But I just thinking about this before we make a vote, I just need to do all my homework. I think it would be better before I would before we take a vote. Whenever we're taking a vote on what to do, that's when we need to do it in my mind. And I know not all of us are going to be able to go, including myself, maybe, if it's a day I can't go. But I need to see that.
We'll get something.
Okay. And my last question, and this is more for you, and it is not to put the Mass Act and Education Foundation on the line or anything. They have done so much for us, but some of the comments were centered around, oh, you don't need a STEM room, or you do need a STEM room, or or you mentioned the new technology. And I saw that the foundation was at a retreat, learning about how to get more money. So is there ever been, I know not 32 million, I know not maybe a million, but has there I'm sure there has been some talk about them helping a little or maybe not. I don't want to put them on the spot. They're have already done great things.
Yeah, I think the the Education Foundation is here to support the the needs of this school district. So recently, they gave us the largest single grant in the STEM maker spaces for the elementary schools of nearly $100,000. If if it so is the desire of the board to say that there's components of this construction project that might lend itself well to the use of EITC dollars, which are dollars that are provided have certain restrictions for innovation and new program, we could certainly explore that. I I don't know if they have, you know, in three years, they might have the capacity to raise the amount of money to get something. But, you know, in a year, I don't know how much money they'd be able to raise for that. But that's a good point.
Couple of examples are equipment, like you said, for STEM rooms, computers, furniture, playground equipment, things like that. And none of that would be installed for three years. So you would have three years to to raise that money. So we've, again, whatever they would be willing to do. But those are the types of examples that they could contribute to a construction project without actually contributing to the construction.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'll start with, if we weren't the option of the renovation and just, you know, adding new mud or adding those classrooms back in, any idea what the useful life of that building would then become?
Yeah, I think you, you know, the the new mechanical systems could be 20 years before you're kind of redoing another mechanical system. You're going to be spending a few more dollars running that mechanical system because it's going to take a little bit more to heat and air condition because, again, just because of the insulation qualities of those things. You'll put a new roof on, so that should last 20, 25 years. You know, you'll put all new windows in, so they should last 20, 25 years. So you're putting in a lot of new things that'll last quite a long time. So again, you're not to renovate is not just throwing money away. I mean, you're buying a lot of good quality things, and we'd make sure that everything that is installed is is a high quality. You're just stuck within those walls. There's only so many windows we can put in the the classrooms. Because of the square box that you're in, they're going to be long and skinny. Instead of being triangular shaped, we can make them rectangular, but they're going to be long and skinny. And if you if you if you see Sladington Elementary School as that example, that was an open pod system. And we 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 made small group rooms in the middle and then put rectangular classrooms around like outside. But in doing that, we they would have nine classrooms, and we brought back six. So every time we did that, we had to go build an addition over to the side. So we could look at that as well. And now the addition gets bigger because we're going to make square classrooms, but we would make less square classrooms. So it would just be kind of a battle back and forth on on the compromises of what's okay versus, you know what, that's just not going to going to work out.
And if we went with that idea, it's 20, 25 years.
I'm sorry, can I interject? Because I had a similar question. I just wanted to follow up on something. Do you mind? So you mentioned that we did like did the renovation, put a new roof on like in 25 years. Is the roof for a new building any different life?
No.
Right.
And but we can.
In all the renovations, how long would that existing building last? Is it another 60 years, 80 years, 100 years?
The new building allows you to.
I'm not asking about the new building. I'm asking about the existing.
The existing building, you're going to get the the length of whatever material you're putting on. So a roof is 20, 25 years.
The base building, you're going to get 25. I understand every 25 years I got to replace it.
Well, yeah, I mean, that could stay. It depends on how long you want to.
Existing building, if I'm willing to do those renovations, how long will that structure last as it sits today?
There is nothing wrong with the structure. It's not going to collapse. So it's not like a.
More renovation, that building could last for another 100 years.
You would be doing these types of projects every 20, 25 years.
I'd be doing the same types of projects with a new building.
Yes, and you would you would have the the layout locations of things is what you're kind of stuck with. So the the plan of that building never changes. Longevity. Yeah.
And longevity.
Mm-hmm.
Does my kind of follow up to that? So is there anything that we're not addressing now, because it's in pretty decent shape, that we would need to address over those next 20 to 25 years? You know, the things that maybe have about 10 years left on them. We wouldn't need to necessarily worry about that now, but we can't wait 20 to 25 years to do it. Is there anything that kind of fits in that bucket?
I don't know. And again, that depends. If you wanted to spend 12 million instead of 22, yeah, in the $12 million option, there may be some things that we have to forego. Maybe the windows stay, or that's probably a bad idea, but there may be some things we let go. In the renovation scheme that we're showing, we're going to make the insides and the outside of that building as new as we can possibly make it. Where you're where you're living with for until you move on from that building is its layout, is its, you know, the the addition that we had to put on the side. So you've got, you know, classrooms of odd shapes, and then you go down a hallway and down another hallway to get to the wing that we had to build that was over there. So it's not as the layout is certainly not as ideal. The the spaces may not be as ideal as it could be. So, yeah, I mean, renovation projects cost less. You end up with a little bit more compromises in those buildings. And again, there's there's certain things that are much more difficult to fix, like the insulation quality of the existing building and things like that. You're going to spend more running that building than you would on a new building.
Understand. I'm just trying to do this in terms of comparison purpose here, just to make sure I have all of the information that I would need in order to make that decision. When we mentioned the 525 versus the 625, would you go to bid at 625? And then if that number was too high, we would come back, scale it back? Or would you do it as 525 with an alternate? Is there is there a way to do this?
Yeah, that that would be the alternate. It's either going to be an an add alternate or a deduct alternate, which is essentially the same thing. So it gives you the ability to say, and we can do that in phases. We can say 525, 575, 625, depending on where that addition is. And the one idea, if it's a if it's two, two story wings, we may have two classrooms here and two classrooms there, or four classrooms on one side. We have some options to play with there. So you would be getting your approvals for a larger building. We would be planning the stormwater management for the larger building. And it allows you then to say, nope, you know what, we're going to pull back. But in a five year window, you could go back and go, wait, we need those four more classrooms. Let's go and build it. And you have all of those approvals. In fact, you can you can actually go and get extensions of those building approvals so you don't have to go back to land development within a certain window of time.
So you would have that option going back in future time? Okay, I just want to mention, because I think we did that with two of the other buildings and they did it as well, so.
And it's smart. It's we always like to make sure there's a couple of big ticket alternates in case we get into trouble, in case something happens right at bid time. You know, we dealt with that last year with with tariffs. Well, you know, that talk came out when we had all these things out to bid, and everybody went, oh, my God. So there were some things that were in there that we were able to pull back if we needed to versus saying, let's have tile one or tile two on the floor. That could be a couple of thousand dollars, which is thousands of dollars. But it'd be nice to have something that's a big piece that we could take away and still be able to afford the building if if things go, if bids don't come in successful.
Okay. And in terms of those capacity numbers, the 525 or the 625, they're PDE capacity numbers.
That's 25 kids in a class.
So we so we would, if we kind of did our own, the 525, and we worked out to be like a 460 or something like that, is the actual true functional capacity of that school.
Right.
I'm glad that Andrea brought up the fact that instead of you, the Audubon comments and the feedback, that was predominant across the feedback of, well, just you just closed a school. Why in the world would you build a new one? Well, it's because unfortunately, over the course of many years in this district, we've had two buildings that have been left to complete disrepair, so we're trying to fix one of them. So I do think that's a great idea, Dave, if we can get that, some type of, you know, frequently asked question. I don't know that we need to answer every single question out there that wants to go all the time. But if there is a recurring question that we see, such as an Audubon one, having a frequently asked question part of the Arrowhead floor would be a great idea. Getting back to the last presentation that you made, when we talked about if we're building behind the existing one and the school's still going on here, and you mentioned like a really high fence, could you kind of give an idea of what that really like looks like? I mean, if you're if you're in the existing building, are you still going to be disrupted from the construction happening behind you? Is there ways to to manage that?
There will be a large construction job happening behind that school. And the and the other schools where we've done that during the day, they really don't hear them. They they know when the PSSAs are and things like that, so they won't do anything big and loud that day. And occasionally, you might hear a truck backing up or two, but it's not on top if you like, if it was in the very next room. So the fence that we are showing, essentially the 30 foot zone there, contractors think that's good because that's a good amount of space between the two buildings. It's also part of a fire code, so we can build a new building 30 feet away from an existing building and not have to worry about fire code issues between the two buildings. So the fence itself is can be whatever it needs to be. Usually, it's chain link fence, eight foot high. We can put the the matting in it so you can't see through it. You know, when the kids are at at recess towards the front of the school, they wouldn't be able to necessarily see through the fence. But as the building gets taller, they'll be able to see it. We had some great opportunities where we took kids, you know, into the building during construction and things like that. So the contractors work very, very well with teachers when they know when there's testing, when there's special things going on, where they know they need to be a little bit more quiet. Certainly, there's going to be a day or two when somebody complains about something. Certainly there's going to be a day or two when somebody complains about something. But it's compared between the two, there's significantly less disruption when you're building in the back of that space. There's six acres back there that we can have space for, you're going to build the building, you're going to lay down materials, you're going to have 30, 40 contractors that are need to park. So there's a lot of space back there that we're going to need for all of those things. And we think there's enough space back there to safely coordinate or cordon them from the school side.
Two last questions, they both kind of come from Andrea here. We talked about the time between now and the building of a new school and what would have to be done to Arrowhead. If we could, you know, not just think about that, if we could work, if we could actually come up with a concrete number, because that would actually kind of be part of the total cost of a new school. So we would really kind of need to add that too, because we're going to have to do what we have to do to make sure these kids are safe in a safe environment. So that's just that question for administration. And I do think that the idea of, even if it's not Metacritic Education Foundation, but a reach out to the community, I mean, we had a very good response when we did a field project and reaching out to the community to try and get a certain offset for, you know, lights and fields and stuff like that. I'm sure that we would have a similar type of response about the education of our children. So I think that is a good avenue to kind of look at.
Thank you for the presentation. I am familiar with this school as my children have gone through it. And I saw very much in the survey that parents understood the need to make a lot of significant modifications to the school. I'm thinking if this were to be renovated and looking at the plans that were made, even in the scalability of the renovation. The plumbing is original. The bathrooms are small. I mean, are all of these things included to accommodate in these renovations? And also, does it impact the square footage for classroom size?
Yes. The, it's, cost per square foot to renovate is going to be higher because we are ripping out everything. Again, you're starting over. So rather than then building a pipe in, you know, an area where there's nothing right now, I can just run a pipe, there's nothing in my way, I got to go dig and find it in the existing slab. So you're jackhammering up that slab, finding that pipe, replacing it, running something new, building the larger bathrooms. That's always a hard thing too, because all those bathrooms are too small and it's hard to just renovate a foot or two to make them code compliant. So what you do is you end up ripping them out and taking a boy-girl suite into just one, or you reduce the amount of toilets that you need and then you start building toilets. So now I've got to build toilets instead of, not instead of classrooms, but in addition to classrooms. So there's a lot of those code compliant things that would have to happen to be to modern building codes.
Could I just follow up on that question? Can you tell us, Mike, are you, in the renovation scenarios, are you tearing the thing down to the steel and then?
Not down to the steel?
I want to make sure that we get the right picture of what exactly, because we don't have, I know you outlined a lot of things, this is what the renovation would cost, but, you know, to really say, you know, what is exactly are we doing? Because to get that picture about pulling the pipes out, you're changing the bathrooms, you know, are all the walls coming down? You know, is the drop ceiling coming down?
Yeah, I think the list, when you looked at the outside of the school, it may look similar. So where there's a window now that's not insulated, we would take that out and put an insulated window in. All those classrooms that have doors to the outside, we would replace that with glass so we wouldn't have doors anymore because there are security concerns with that. So that when you walked around the outside of the building where we're not building additions, it might look similar. We're going to have to replace some of that brick that's there. You have to cut out a section of brick, put in the flashing, put in the weep holes so that it drains properly. Because you saw in a couple of those areas where the brick was popping out, it's because water's getting in from above, there's no way for it to come out. It sits there, freezes. The glazed brick doesn't allow for moisture to expand, so it pops out. So we're going to fix the areas that are already failing and then you're going to have to fix them afterwards where other areas, hopefully there won't be as many fails when we do the roof. The roof will look the same. Inside, you're probably taking down almost all the walls. Most of those walls aren't walls anyway, they're partitions. The ceilings all come out because we're going to run new ductwork, you're going to run new piping above them. So inside, I think you're knocking down almost everything. The library has that skylight, so we might put something into the library or some sort of nice space underneath that. Where there's bathrooms, there would be bathrooms again because that's where plumbing is coming from. But like I said, if you have five toilets in each now, to make them code, it might be three toilets in each, which now means I don't have enough toilets in the building, which now means I got to go build toilets as part of the addition or something else to get the code compliant toilet count up.
So would the library still have no walls in a renovation?
No, I think we would enclose them. And again, the example that we showed at Sladington, we kept, they had a, they had an open pod on either side, had a library in the middle that didn't have any walls. So we raised the floor of their library, because of course it stepped down and there was no ramp. We raised it up so everything was at the same level and then just put glass on either side of the corridor and basically kept it where it was. So that would be, that as a space isn't bad. It's got natural light coming from above, so you don't get a window, but okay, and we wouldn't enclose that. That library as program is small. The STEM program they're trying to incorporate in that space is kind of just going in the corner, so maybe that art room becomes that STEM room. So we might take over more things in the middle of the building for library, media arts, your STEM programs, stuff like that there, and then go build art someplace else. Maybe art and music are part of a new addition because those spaces want more sinks and more storage and killing rooms and things like that. So, I mean, those are all things that we have to think about in a renovation design. To your point about what does it look like when we're done, the outside looks like it does now and the inside is partitioned differently. But you're still going to have the corridor around something in the middle, probably the library, which would be enclosed, so there'd be a door and some glass versus just walking by it open. But it's still going to be a deep square. I can't change the shape of that, which means that you're still going to get the corridor around and either long skinny classrooms or more rectilinear classrooms that are a bit more of a better shape and probably right sized as far as square footage. But then that means, I don't know, whether 12 classrooms, 16 classrooms, I might not be able to put back as many as you have, which means now that spits out outside, I got to build a bigger addition. So those are some of the trade-offs.
And then in considering the new building, I know, well, first, get back to the LEED certification. Have any of the projects that you've been working on been pursuing the LEED certification?
Yes.
No, they haven't.
Yeah, and all of them are pursuing LEED because they're getting a grant. That grant program has expired. It was called the Alternative Clean Energy Grant. It was 2008 Obama stimulus money. That's how long ago it was. It was federal money that came to the states. It took a long time for the states to let it trickle down. A certain governor tried to stop it for a while. Then it came back on, so we built a couple more schools with that money. It was actually for any public entity, municipalities and things like that. It was capped out at $2 million for projects. So we built a couple of schools that utilized that $2 million, but had to get LEED gold. So in some cases, we may have spent $700,000 more on a project to get that, but then they got $2 million, so they were 1.3 ahead. So it was a good thing. But at this point, without grant funding, without a monetary reason to achieve it, you will be spending more to do it. Doesn't mean it's a bad thing, it's a great program. But the schools that we've done that don't go for LEED certification, we've had sustainability meetings, we've taken the LEED checklist and said, all right, if we were doing LEED, we would achieve this, 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 and this. The goal of this credit is to reduce your energy consumption. So while we may not choose geothermal because it's very expensive and very hard to operate, we're going to do this system, which will maybe not get us as many points if you're going for certification, but still get us a building that's going to consume less electricity, which is the whole purpose.
And I have one more question regarding the new building. The plot that you would have to work with in the back to have a site for a new building? I know in the past, some of the times we've talked about orientation and optimal use of sunlight for the classrooms, is there any opportunity within how that is set to optimize the use of sunlight?
Yeah, we absolutely would do that. We would look for the core spaces as well, some of the common spaces to be turned in a way that they're facing south so we can get some natural light and then the ones that face north, you know, don't have to worry as much about shading, so that's always optimal as well. So it's a good position back there from where it sits. And we would do everything we can to maximize natural daylight.
Thank you. Again, a very thorough and informative presentation. A lot of my thoughts and questions have been raised already on this side of the table, which is great. I've had some concerns. If we're looking at the renovation option, I know that, you know, as soon as you start renovating a building, anything that is not ATA compliant is no longer grandfathered in and it needs to become ATA compliant. Is that something that's factored into the plan and the cost?
Yes.
Okay. And as well as all building codes and things like that that have changed in the last 40-plus years?
Yes, you would be required to do that.
And that's factored into our costs that we're looking at? The other concern that I have is, given the lack of maintenance for the last 40 years of this building, you know, there's kind of no telling what we're going to find once we start opening this Pandora's box. So if we encounter environmental concerns, if we encounter mold remediation that has to be done, for example, is that factored into this cost?
Typical asbestos abatement would be. You would have to abate that in a renovation project, just like you would have to abate that if you were demolishing the building. The, it's, again, when there's no one in the building, it's a lot easier to abate all that. So if we know we're renovating, we may choose to do the abatement of the entire building the very first summer, say it's the floor tile. So they would go and rip up all the floor tiles. So we may still have kids in the building in certain areas when they come back, and when they come back, there's just no floor tile in their classroom for a year. It's safe, it's okay, because we've abated all the bad stuff, but it's unfinished. Because we wouldn't want to go back and put a new floor and then rip it back up again and then put it back down again. So in some of those cases, when there's renovations, you may have a year where there's nothing on the floors or ceiling tiles are missing. You still have fire code, you still have lights, it's still safe, but they're kind of living in a renovation project for a year with some things that are open and unfinished. But you would, all of our cost numbers include coming up to code compliance that you would be required to do anyway.
Okay, I guess my concern is, given the fact that we know we've had water infiltration for a number of years, is there potentially unrecognized unseen mold that we're going to encounter that may be in areas that we've never previously accessed? So I-
Yeah, there could be. And that's where, in those construction costs, we'll show a higher contingency percentage because there's going to be a bit more unknowns. So in the new construction, I think we showed 7%, which is something like, almost close to $2 million in safe contingency. If you use $2 million in contingency in a brand-new building, then we made some bad choices along the way. But hold it, you know, hold on to that just in case. Now in a renovation, you might use half of that, because you're going to get a call from Dan one day that says, hey, listen, we just opened this up and there's 12 feet of roof decking that's just rotted out. You know, the guy put his foot right through it, we got to replace it. We didn't see it because we can't get to it without demoing certain things ahead of time, so we left money aside. And you go, all right, that's $40,000 and now you're replacing a piece of, you know, the contractor's going to say it's 60 and then Dan and I are going to go to, no, it's not 60, it's like 40. But that's a change order and that's why you would have contingency money set aside for, more for renovations, because you will find those.
Having lived through home renovations, I know on a smaller scale, I can imagine what you might encounter. The other concern that came up is when you were talking about, for example, replacing areas of the brick facade that are leaking and they're seepage. And so you're going to take out the brick, you're going to replace the flashing, you're going to put in the weep holes. Does that, what does that do to the overall integrity of the rest of the brick? Are we then looking at, you know, having to replace a different area in another 10 years? Does it weaken the overall integrity of the wall to replace it in pieces rather than just tearing it down and building new?
I don't know that it weakens it. I mean, we could, when they put it back, the brick veneer is a veneer. What a veneer is, is it's not structural, it's the paint on your wall. The wall is what's keeping weather out. The wall is what's keeping, keeping the air, you know, the hot air on one side and the corner on the other side. So the bricks are the veneer of the building that's making it look nice. It's supposed to be able to drain, like we said last time, and that's what's just not happening. So we could choose to replace areas that we know are already failing and let the rest go, or we could choose to replace the base course of the entire building all the way around and say, all right, it might not be failing over here yet, but there's no flashing here, there's no, it could happen tomorrow and we don't know about it yet, so let's fix it all. So those are conversations that we would have to have as part of, you know, the scope for a renovation project. Again, that's what's hard. In construction in the 70s, they didn't do those things as good. And as nice as that brick is, again, that glazing on there, other brick may be more forgiving because it would allow moisture to come out, but the glaze doesn't let it do it. So it's going to find its weakest point, which is the mortar, or it's just going to push the whole brick out, and that's what's happening. There's an area right in the front and a couple areas on the side.
And then one final comment and not really a question for you, but a recurring theme that I hear when we're talking about renovating this building is the idea of instead of and trade-offs and limits and compromise. And my concern is that we would be losing our opportunity for innovation in that building. We're talking a lot about, you know, the cost and the financial impact, but I think that we have to, as a board, also consider the educational impact. And renovating that building, that's where I feel like, you know, you have that one slide in here that shows the balance, and I hear that we lose some of that balance with a renovation as opposed to a rebuild. So that's just my two cents on the whole matter. Thank you.
Ms. Drummond?
Thanks for coming out tonight. I just had a couple, most of my questions were also already addressed. I had a question of, so if we were to build new behind the existing building, what is the rough timeline for the demolition end to make the fields and, I guess the kids would be without for a while?
Yeah, I think during construction, they'd have everything in the front. After construction, in August of '22 is when they're moving into the new building. And like I said before, that's actually one of the more challenging times, because that summer, we're going to take as much of the big nasty demo of that building down, the real dirty stuff, because kids aren't there, but it takes a while to get all that stuff away, to rip up all the piping, to lay new concrete down. So we may end up, depending on the strategy, we may end up, come winter, you may stone the new parking lot, but not pave it, because we don't want to pave in December and January. So maybe that's okay, then we're living with stone for a while. You know, the grass will plant, but it's probably not going to come, and it'll come in, but not really hold, so you probably want to stay off of it in the fall of '22 until, you know, the spring of '23. So that transition year, that first year that they're in the new building, there's still site work going on. But in that new building, we would say, and I think we showed that, we would still have the new playground, the new play area. So they would still be able to play outside. They'd have areas where they could do that. The fields that we were showing all up along the front, again, they would plant grass. At some point, they'd be able to be turned over maybe in the spring of '23, but you may have, you know, September, October and parts of November where you're not, you don't have as much fields to play outside as you would when everything is done. So as, like I said, as easy as that first phase is of a building and everything else in the front stays, that second phase can sometimes be a little tougher, because it's like, yeah, we're done, well, now we still got to do some stuff up front. But the majority of that, you know, the roof structure and the structure of the building would be down, hopefully, in time for kids to come back in August of '22. And then they're just really picking up debris, you know, digging up the old storm lines, digging up the old piping and things like that and getting the site work in front of the building completed.
And the fields comment actually leads to my second question, which is on page 30, with the new school layout, you indicate the fields up to the one side. I think I remember the site was described that this is a partially sloped area.
Yeah.
I don't have a sense, though, of how much-
I don't have a sense, though, of how much where that is.
We looked at, and we can address that and say, you know, what do we want to put back there? Does it want to be Little League baseball? Does it want to be Little League soccer? Does it want to be a full-size football field? The bigger whatever it is, the more of a challenge it is. It's sloped really towards its left end as it goes down towards the residential area. So where your parking lot is now is relatively flat, and then after that parking lot is where it kind of drops off. So in the diagram that you're looking at, again, we can decide, we can move that bus lane around a little bit if you come back and say, we need a regulation soccer field here, or you know what, just give me three U-10 soccer fields, you know, the little tiny ones going left to right. We can plan for any of that, but you're going to, you will have some of the slopes on that left-hand side to deal with.
And that same slide, this also makes me think of those on the bottom, those are residential homes. So is this construction, would that impact those homeowners? I mean, in terms of construction to their...
No, again, I'm sure they'd want to come out and see what you're doing in the backyard, but there's going to be, there's setbacks that we would have to build, that we have to stay with them. Oftentimes, there's buffers, we may add a few trees maybe to the back. Oftentimes, in part of the process, there's going to be land development, so there may be a neighbor that comes out that says, hey, I'm a little concerned, what can you do? And we go, hey, let's add some more trees back there to provide a little bit more of a visual buffer. You know, the loud part of the school is still happening on the other side, towards level roads, so there's really nothing loud happening in the back of the building. Everything's, no one's really going to go back there. So it's, you know, if your neighbor was doing something, you'd go ask what they were doing. But there, I don't see any negative impact of what you're doing here to the neighbors. And again, you're still trying to come back and maintain some big open fields, put back new playgrounds, which I'm sure they're able to access, you know, on weekends and things like that and over the summer.
And then just one more. I'd just like to hear more about Slatington Elementary, and were they constrained? Why did they choose the renou and instead of the new construction? What kind of constraints were they facing?
They, it was cost. Even the renovation project was big for them. They had an elementary school that had their district office inside of it, and they had modulators in the back, so they were trying to bring the modulators into the building. So actually, one of the, there's two big additions on that building. Part of it is classrooms to bring those modulators in and accommodate the ones that we lost when we were shifting some things around, and then a district office, a big two-story district administration office in the front, because when you walked into the school to meet the superintendent, you were right in the middle of their kindergarten wing, with kids running around, and then you had to go downhill around the corner to get to the district office, and upstairs was the principal, so that was kind of a big mess. So we kind of sorted all that out, put, you know, two very distinct entrances, one for the school, one for the office. So it was a big project. We built, you know, those additions were big. They didn't have, that's built on a big hill, so they didn't have a place that they could build a new school that was flat. And if we built behind that school, it'd be heavily sloped and be much more expensive. So they were pushing the limits of their budget just to do the renovation project. Like I said, they didn't have an option on that site to build new. It's a nice project, and again, it'd be great to go take a look at it, and, you know, you can't say anything bad about it. We were just dealing within a limited box. We made it nice, but it's, like I said, it's a nicer version of what they had.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hartshill?
Thank you. Just a few questions. First, starting on page six, one of the points discussed is moving from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten. At this point, we've not really, as a board, had some standard discussions about that. And we have some preliminary cost information, but I don't know that we have details on that, nor have we really discussed how to fund it. So my question is, how much does the desire, you mentioned the desire to move to full-day kindergarten, how much did that weigh into your recommendation?
Full-day kindergarten here is two classrooms, maybe three if you go to a new, if you go to the 625 enrollment. So you're either building a little bit less of an addition as part of the renovation project, or building a little bit less of the new building. I don't think full-day kindergarten versus half-day kindergarten had any real effect on the recommendation of whether putting money into that existing building is worth it or not.
Okay. Because the reason I ask, was in your June 4th presentation, there were a number of pages devoted to that. It's a fairly prominent point here as well, so.
Yeah.
I wouldn't understand how much, it seemed like it weighed in pretty heavily.
It weighs in heavily on the capacity.
On the capacity, but as far as included to build new versus renovate, not so much.
No. If you told me tomorrow, you know what, we're going to stick with half-day kindergarten, I'd still tell you that that existing building is still, has a long laundry list. It doesn't change that laundry list on that other slide of everything else you need to do in that building.
Right, which is my next question. Good segue. Page 11, so would this be the items that are needed under the master plan as we term it, the 12 to 14 million dollars?
That is, I think some of those was included in that 2016 study, and some of that, things like building expansion to meet needs was not. I think the study was talking about, again, the existing 51,000 square feet. So it was talking about, again, I believe the new roof, the new windows, things like that, that we had read, some of the physical attributes.
The 51,000 included modulators?
No. So the 51,000 is just the building, there's...
The master plan had, I think, two million or so for expansion of the building.
Okay, if it included that...
Which was, it did include expansion, which I believe was to replace the modulators. So if the 51 doesn't include the modulators...
Maybe the 58 would include that.
51 plus the modular.
Right.
Okay, so that expansion was in there. But, so page 11 is a lot of the master plan items, but maybe not a lot?
It is everything that we think the building needs, and then there were, the reason we put point 11 there, to include the additional items, was obviously that master plan, that study includes all of those things and other things in more detail than just kind of listing the individual pieces.
I'm trying to get a sense of price tag on the various options. That's what we asked. I started with, closed ability at zero, master plan is 14, a level of renovations is 22, next level's 28, new building is 35. So I was trying to get a sense of, the items on page 11, what is the price tag on those?
I think you would have to take that and reevaluate that with today's numbers, and then I would think you'd need to evaluate the scope that's in that master plan list, that 2016 list, to see, all right, are we just fixing the systems? I don't know that that moved the walls at all. I think if that room is triangular shaped, it's triangular shaped when it's done. So it didn't move a lot of the interior things.
But I believe the master plan did have some cost escalation factors going from 2016 through 2026, or whatever that thing is. Page 16, again, trying to get a sense of how much this factored in. I mean, saving 20,000 is nice on energy, but payback, if that's one of your big factors on 35 million is...
No, it's not going to pay back. All right.
This is just kind of nice to have and looking at that.
It shows you, the point of that is, you can put in a very high-efficiency system, you're still putting it into a 1970s insulated building. You can save more by doing that in a 2020 energy code building. You know, to your point, you're certainly not making up the difference in cost there.
And then with some of the renovation options discussed on pages 22, 23, where we talk about expansion due to potential enrollment growth. When you looked at potential enrollment growth, did you look at the possibility at all of adding on to other existing elementaries, or was the focus of this solely Arrowhead?
This is solely Arrowhead, and I think that's something that the district could address, and we were looking at, at the need to do this here, do it big enough that you're doing it here, to potentially not require you then to have to do it everywhere else.
Then page 37, where you start talking about some of the financial implications and tax implications, just to point out, and I don't know, Tim, you've shared the schedule with everybody on the board, but we reviewed a schedule at the finance committee meeting, the impact of a $35 million borrowing, and one of the options that was presented, just so you know, that there's like four consecutive fiscal years where debt service increases anywhere from 400,000 to 600,000 a year. Okay, so each year, debt service costs go up 400 in one year, 500 in the next, 600, then I think goes back down to 400. And I think that's important to keep in mind, and granted, the debt could be structured in a different way, but from the Act 1 tax increase at 2.3%, we get about $1.8 million in revenue. So in those years where that debt service is increasing, about 25% of a potential max tax increase is going to fund that debt service, which leaves a lot less money for other expense costs, including contracts, normal inflation, et cetera, benefit cost, these are, so that's important to keep in mind. So Tim, if you had shared that schedule, I think that'd be important to share with everybody. Thanks. And then a couple of questions regarding the survey. What were the total number of potential respondents in the survey?
534, that's what was listed.
No, but I'm saying, what's the population that could have responded? Trying to get a sense of response rate.
I don't know.
Like how many, I forget how many households, 30,000 households? And how many postcards went out? Could you get me that? 30,000 households. The other thing to point out, it doesn't move the needle much, but the 47 respondents that identified as district employees, 94% of those strongly agreed or agree. So I took those out of the numbers and moved it slightly, but your 67% that strongly agree or agree goes down to 64, and the disagree, strongly disagree goes from 26 to 28, just to make sure there. Do we know of the Elkhorn, Lower Providence residents, how many reside in the Arrowhead area?
That was not a question, I definitely didn't respond to that.
That wasn't it. And the last thing, in the interest of full disclosure here, Ms. Reese mentioned that none of the board members have any benefit here of constructing a new Arrowhead. Anybody at KCBA, Fidavia, or any other consultants have any interest in whether an Arrowhead building gets constructed or not?
No. Again, we'd like to be the architects that you're working with, so there is interest for us to work with you on any type of a project.
Do you have employees that live in Arrowhead that work with you?
Oh, yeah, we have, Joe Lewis has, he has two kids or three, I think that'll be, that are going to Arrowhead. He hasn't been working with us. I know he was one response on the survey, but, yeah.
He has more, he's a member of your firm, but not...
Yeah, he hasn't been, he's been watching our responses, but I can tell you whether he's in favor of it or not, but, yeah, we have one employee that has children here.
Okay, all right.
I don't know if you guys do or not.
That was it. Thank you.
Real quick, I don't want to take Jen's spot, I just wanted to ask, when Brian, you mentioned about the Methaxon employees, were they separated out as Methaxon employees and also residents of Methaxon? Just FYI, I just, because you mentioned they had such a high percentage, I just was curious, because some are both.
Right.
Yeah.
There were three categories in the information I saw. It was resident of Lower Providence, there were 400, resident of Warsester was 84, and then Methaxon Scoresmith employee, 47.
I just, I bet some of those employees are also residents, but that's just my guess.
And, yeah, correct, I agree, but I'm just going off with the data that was there.
Ms. Can't Crew?
I will say, a lot of my questions were answered, but I, when I, Brian had a good point that I was going to say as well. When you look at what Fidavia had put together for that $14 million that needed to be repaired in our, in our master plan, I'm curious if it almost is if we had listed, this is what's in the master plan, and these are what things that need to be done for renovation, because when we look at preventing, you know, adding classrooms to have doors, you know, for lockdown scenarios, you didn't list, on your first presentation, you listed so many things, and the way you did it was so separated that I almost wish you had put it all in one list, like a shopping list, saying acoustic ceiling tile were chipped throughout, that taking a whole ceiling would have been $10,000. Putting a fire suppression sprinkler system would be, you know, putting in a full classroom, like almost making it be, like you said, pricing it out so that we could see that that renovation was going to be $22 million for this reason. Because I do feel like we're putting a bunch of Band-Aids on, ripping out the interior and making sure it's going to work for us, and I do agree with what Kim says, we have to look at educational programming, and I feel like we're, all these pieces all split up and written all different ways. I think it makes us hard for us to kind of truly understand what the renovation was going to look like. To me, it sounds like it's going to be gutted out, rebuilt from the inside because of the ADA recommendations, all the, you know, with the sprinkler system, HVAC, everything had to be fixed, and then the exterior also being repaired. So to me, it looks like, but, then the other thing was, when we look at the number, it's so far away from me. When we look at the number of projections, there were four residential areas. When we look at the pipeline, there were four different projects going on in Arrowhead, and with the enrollment and how would, the future enrollment would look like, I'm curious to let us review that again, what the projection would be, because I'm trying to understand the square footage and how you increased it for 500 versus doing it for 625 students, just being able to really understand, so that if we do look at building new, what do we need to do now and then we could add on later. Warsester was one of those buildings that we built, knowing the potential that we had to build on as we increased, so. But other than that, all my questions were answered.
Yeah, the design of the new building, or certainly even if there's a renovated addition, we would make sure that there's space adequate for expanding, certainly if the target to start with was 525. The math there is essentially five kindergarten rooms and then either four rooms per grade or five rooms per grade. Because it's K to four, you get four, 1, 2, 3, and 4 is four, that's, times 25 is 100. So that's the, that's the jump from 525 to 625 is having four first-grade classrooms versus five first-grade classrooms all the way up. So that was, again, kind of the base that we would start with. Allow you guys to expand on day one, as we were talking about, if the bids come in favorably or if you agree a year from now, yes, you know, that enrollment is coming, let's make sure we build that, or you can put that aside for another day.
Okay, yeah, thank you. About to take off with this fan blowing my ear, so. Randomness here, sorry about this. I recognize it's Brian's point, I think it's important for the board that when we talk about the 20-year, 25-years, there are certain expenses that are going to happen independent and not consider them sort of removed if they're, we choose to go with new here. One point of element is the, I think on the other comments, Dr. Zerbi in the presentation, Mike, we should make sure we list and not summarize for the public, try to get a little more there. I know that the need for the building is certainly the need for the configuration. There's other elements on the 30% that are providing feedback related to that. I don't think we should be filtering that out of the presentation, because it doesn't look like it's really showing the true feedback of the community. I was just curious, was there any feedback with the teachers on the existing, any positives related to the structure that we have at Arrowhead with the building concept?
I think every positive comment that we heard from the teachers was the spirit of the school, the camaraderie, they were concerned about, you know, we really like that everybody is very open and we see each other all the time, that we understand that there's security issues sometimes with seeing too much of them, or acoustic issues about hearing them, but it was the spirit that they really enjoyed and certainly hoped that they would be able to carry on into a new building. In fact, I think there were a couple of comments that related to that. We had always addressed that as, you know, that spirit comes from the people, we can put you in a new space that'll... can put you in a new space that'll accommodate all of those concerns, and you're bringing that good spirit over with you. The physical attributes of the building, there really wasn't anything that anybody said that they liked. They liked the outdoor spaces, they liked, you know, some of the grass areas, they liked the playground spaces, but were concerned that the one was a little too close to the road. So there really wasn't anything.
There weren't a whole lot of yeses on the, on the existing structure.
No.
So one point on the lead, I know you're an expert in that, but my building at work is a platinum building, so I know that there's other ways that you can get points if there were financial benefits for doing it, I realize that they're sort of dried up, but the natural light, air quality for the, for the building, there's other, like the carpet adhesives that you use instead of having the new car smell that has chemicals you can.
VOCs, yeah.
So you get points for all those type of things, recycled desks, so there's ways that you can get points that are not necessarily as expensive, but also there's ways to get the points that are probably beneficial to the employees and to the students, especially with a building that has had, more recently, submissions around the modulars and the air quality on that. So you did mention, I had one of my questions, with the slight layouts are part of the total cost of restructure, so, and I will mention again, that I can vision the Hopewell experience, and it does parallel pretty well to this, with you would be able to sort of push it off to the side, so that makes sense, I understand that. I think the only thing that, that I still have pause with this, is that I don't feel like we've exhausted all, and maybe you have, I just haven't gotten that comfortable, we've exhausted all the possibilities of reusing some of the partial of the building. So my thought was, is there any possibility of the, sort of the classroom wing, you could say, the big square broken into triangles, could that be kept in some ways as a supplement for maybe, as opposed to going with 625, that could be, be kept in some ways for mechanical equipment if we needed to, you could sort of move it off and get rid of the cafeteria and sort of the less functional part of the building, and then you could reconfigure it, is there, I just feel like we haven't, honestly, Mike, I feel like I see that there are triangles, and you're saying the rectangles aren't going to work, and then we said, okay, we need to move on. So I would like to see if there's any creativity around reducing the cost or reusing some of the building, or possibly just in some ways, mothballed that portion of it, or, because it seems like, if you, if your answers to Brian are, I think it was, the structural building is fine, we need to update it for the last four years, but those costs of having some type of structure in a new building seem that in some ways, if you could break it apart and have a breezeway or something, I don't know, you get my point?
Yeah, I think you'd end up building a bit more new to replace the existing that isn't working out so well for you. Sometimes we've done studies where, to renovate and expand, you end up with a larger building to heat and cool than you would if you built new. So there's energy reasons and just utility reasons to build new, because we could build 10%, you'd have 10% less of a building to heat and cool. The challenge with that structure is it's set, it's a big giant square, so what wants to be in the middle that is, you know, 50 yards away from a window? You know, how much, you know, after that, what else do I have? What else am I doing to, I think I can place classrooms around there, pop another window to get, to get light to come in? We can show you one that we're doing out in Dubreys that had, and exists, we are renovating that building, it's an open pod building, and again, we had nine classrooms, some of which didn't have natural light, we're going back with five, and a music room in the middle, so we put music in the middle of that space and said, all right, music and art, you don't get windows. And that was just part of the compromise, because that was, you know, less expensive than building new. So no one's saying you can't, it's just a question of, of the amount of compromises you're going to have when you're done with that existing building. A lot of times there's, we did a new middle school once, where we built an entire middle school on an existing pool and gym, because the pool and gym were great, the rest of the academic part was terrible. So we built 90% of the new building, but lopped it on to an old gym and a pool, so we didn't have to build that. There's really nothing here to anchor something onto, the gym and the cafeteria are too small. Even when it's situated being that close to the road, I don't know how we would anchor something new around in the back of that. And then when you look at the, the big square, it's, it's a big square, there's, there's always so much that's going to get around the perimeter of that. So again, we can show you other designs that we've done, we can walk you through Sladington, and it's a great project, it's just a matter of the compromises that come from that, I think those buildings had other attributes that were worth saving, when in truth here, it's, it's hard to find, it's hard to make that list of things that you like about the building, like we said, with the teachers, there really were no, but I really like this room.
I understand, I just having trouble swallowing it, I guess, a little bit. At one point, I think Dave, you and I talked about this, and maybe it's something that we don't want to consider, but Eagleville and Warsester were built around the same architectural prints for the most part. I would imagine there's a significant savings, and I know that maybe there's shortcomings in this, in the admin setup and so forth, security, but is there any consideration in reusing those or revising those in some ways from, you know, as opposed to creating a new footprint all the way?
Let me do this, let me work with Dan and Fidavia to consider what we can do with either of those prints, and whether they can be reused on the site, and we'll work with Mike to find out if that can be used or to what extent it can be used. That's a fair question.
I mean, just to piggyback that, that was one of my questions was, when you talk about the gross area and the square footage, with Warsester and Eagleville was based on 500 students, are we looking at the same of the 81,000 total gross area, right, like?
Yeah, I think we're actually looking for more, a larger building than those two buildings are made for, but to Paul's point, I think, you know, if 90% of the, of the design is already designed, and all we need to do is put a classroom on this end and that end, and then fix the entranceway, you know, maybe that's a more affordable, more, because one of the things that, that's important with that, that you may not realize, Paul, is that we don't want to necessarily create an Arrowhead that's a Taj Mahal, that's so much different than the other elementary schools. We want to make sure that we keep the equity in line with what we're providing in other builders, and that's really why we're at this conversation now, because we all recognize that there's an equity disparity now. So with that, which we don't want to, we don't want to make a reverse, now we have three buildings that are less of, you know, a caliber than, than the new building, so that would be, that would be worse than the situation right now. So I think there's a merit in to what you're requesting.
The challenge that you find, the construction costs are the same, whether you're building that guy's design, that guy's design, or my design, it's, it's the construction costs are all the same, so, and you have to adapt the site to that as well, so you're, you're 99% of the way to the same types of costs by reusing older plans, and then the question you have to ask yourself is, is that, is that a school you want to rebuild? Is that, do we want to rebuild a building that's X amount of years old, that has, that was done maybe a few years before? And again, some of the great examples that you saw in some of the other schools that we walked through, were there new thinkings of how elementary schools should be laid out that would be, that you could do now, you're starting over, so sure, you can grab those plans, or we could start over, 85,000 square feet's going to cost the same. We can take things out, we can say, you know what, let's not do terrazzo, let's do tile. Those are the decisions you can make to try to reduce costs outside of reducing square footage.
So what I, so what I heard then is, besides the site work, besides the square footage, it's the actual material makeup, that, those are the three levers, I think that goes back to Ralph's point a little bit, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, you, we saw some of those, the spaces at, and the Upper Marion spaces, I had that huge, you know, center lobby and the big, you know, learning stairs, those are great, we don't have to have those here. You know, that's a great way to take, you know, several thousand square feet out, so that's, those are the things we can play with, to take any of those numbers down, to make sure we're meeting your needs and make sure we're maximizing cost effectiveness.
Are there any other comments from the board? If not, I want to, one thing real quick, I just want to review some of the things that we need to do to get, if you wouldn't mind, and they're not in any particular order. So I, so the first one is, we want to, we want to get references from some of the, the work that, the locations that we build and renovate from KCBA. The next one that we want to do is, we want to, what will the prop, what will the Arrowhead property take over the next three years, in addition to the planning for the new construction or renovation, until we get to that end result? So what's the, what's the maintenance, windmill, what are the costs and all the projects associated with that? The next one is, we want to do visits, or at least a visit of a, of a building renovation, so that that's what, that'll probably be coming up within a week or two, I don't need to do it soon. We want to look at, you know, have conversations with the foundation and possibly look at, you know, depending on what we do as a, as a plan, we want, is there a way for us to create a funding mechanism to help with the offset of some of the costs with the, with the construction altogether or certain aspects? We want to get the debt scheduled in the hands of all the members of the board, and we probably want to have a conversation about that schedule at one of our meetings here. I want to get the total number of postcards that we nailed down, and 30,000 is the number of households that we're using in all the literature, so we'll get an active number of that as well. And is there a way to better detail of the costs associated with the renovation? So while we have, what we have listed in this current presentation, on the June 4th presentation, I worked with Mike to find out if there's a better way for us to kind of detail that, so that you have a greater appreciation of what is involved in renovation. Yeah, one last. The next one is, I think there's a, we want to review the updates of all the projections and the areas within the district where there's projected enrollment growth, and have a larger conversation about, well, are we going to, are we just trying to fix an issue that is, is associated with the growth projected for the Arrowhead community, or is it including a plan for the entire district, or as we know, there's growth in Arrowhead and Warsester planned, and possibly a more, so we need to think about that, and know that if what we're going to do is going to help solve a whole district problem, or it doesn't really one phase, possibly two phases now. And then we want to look at the drawings and the prints from the Warsester-Eagleville design, and see whether or not those things can be used to reduce the overall cost associated with renovation slash, you know, new construction. Did I miss anything that, that was brought up?
Just the frequently asked question.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation this evening.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate the time and the information. Next on the agenda, we have the master plan 2020 summer projects for consideration. Again, James Miller and Dan Sacola here from Fidavia, our owner's rep team with our director of facilities, Mr. Fretz. This list, which is printed out for you, on the sheet, was a list of projects that was reviewed at the most recent property committee meeting this month, and represents the projects for which we would like to see approval by the board, to allow Fidavia and his team to move forward in getting and preparing documents that these projects can go out to bid. The idea is, and just real quick, before Dan starts, please know that the list of projects is estimated to be about 14.9 million. That is certainly a lot larger than the list of projects we've got to you on any other summer recommendation, but the plan is that if the board sees it the way the administration and property committee had seen it, that by preparing these documents for projects that need to occur, when the bids come in, and if the decision's made early enough, the bids can be put together and we can receive these bids in a timely fashion, like January and February and March, rather than some of the bids this, that this past year coming in in May, June, or April and May. And so it gives the board an opportunity to say, with all these bids, you know, we want to do our $14 million worth of projects, or do we want to do $5 million, $2 million, whatever they be, and knowing that those specifications and those costs will be, you know, put aside for a future consideration, and can then help you make, you know, easier decisions down the road. So hopefully that was helpful, Dan.
He basically took most of what I had to say, which is fine, good evening. No, that is really helpful. We sort of have two pieces to what we need to present tonight, the second piece represents five or six specific items that we want to move forward with, design-wise, I think there's a change order or two, but the piece we're going to address now, that James is going to go into detail with, is exactly as Dr. Zerbi said, it's what, another, many of you have been through property committee, and one of the documents we share on a regular basis is a timeline, and the timeline basically is a month-to-month roadmap of what we need to do and when, and this is the month that we targeted agreeing on the scope of work for 2020, so. It's, it's been reviewed with property, and James is going to go through each, each of the items. I guess that's about it, unless there's any specific overall questions. And then the follow-up items that James will discuss somewhere further down on the agenda, you'll see that they'll tie into some of these items when, when we get there. Thank you.
Well, Dan just took my thunder. Guys, oh, I'm just, Dan just took my thunder. I don't like doing that, because I put it right too close to him, then you overhear me. All right, okay, okay, no problem, okay, see you later, all right? Okay, so we have a number of items open here, but as Dan mentioned, I, okay, as Dan mentioned.
Listen, if you would prefer to have the microphone in there, can you turn the microphone up?
Okay.
I want to make it easy for you, so that we can get through the presentation.
Thank you very much. All right. As Dan mentioned, we've got a timeline, and we, it's this month that we want to move forward with the 2020 projects, and we want to make sure that we get everything timely in a timely fashion in going out. The game plan here is to get majority of these projects out on October, and get them back in November, in plenty of time for the summer to work, to carry on. So when we go down the list here, the first item that we have on here is the work related to the pads and the canopies, that the bids came in too late, sorry, too high, last, this summer, so what we're doing is we're putting it forward for next year. We have the package almost complete, we are, we've made some revisions to make sure it goes in according to what we want to change now, and we're wanting to move forward with that project. The second one, as we all know, Eagleville, right now, we're working with, working on doing a report to establish exactly what we have behind the walls, and we're finishing that up as we speak, when the intent is to bring forward project for next year, to get everything taken care of over at Eagleville. Third item is with regards to reinstalling the restroom, if you recall, we had the one restroom that was being used as storage, what we're doing, what you've already given us approval on, was to create storage downstairs in one of the other locations. in one of the other locations. However, we're now looking at restoring that bathroom as well as increasing the storage at the back of the building, which is the five hundred thousand, or five hundred and fifty thousand. Along with those items, we've got the egress study, the design embed. What we did was we did the design, sorry, to go back. We did an egress study over at the high school. And now we're looking at moving forward to actually implementing that study and actually installing doorways, et cetera, throughout the high school to bring it up to current Next one down is MEP project. That's projects two, three, four, and five. Project two and four was regarding UNIVENTS, which was moved forward previously by the board, and we are actually currently working on that design. But what we are looking to do is trying to, as per the master plan, we were trying to achieve all the mechanical systems, all the repairs, et cetera, within the high school within the first three years. So what we're trying to encapsulate here is to work on all the remaining facility assessment study items regarding mechanical systems and combining everything into one package. The last item, similar to the mechanical systems, we have a number of roofs on the building that are rated as D, which needs to be replaced between twenty nine, twenty twenty and right through to twenty twenty-three. What we'd like to do is to try and capture all those roofs at one time and get the work done and get, get everything all taken care of. So that means then the master plan for the next three years would be then focused, moved to focus on Arcola and Cola and Skyview, which was the whole intent in the first place.
Questions for James on the proposed projects for twenty, or at least to put out the bid for potential for 2020? Mr. Williams?
Are there D roofs at other buildings?
Yes.
So is there any particular reason why we're determining which D roofs to or the D minus?
The, the primary reason is because the fact that there is D roofs on other buildings but are still under warranty. These roofs are not under warranty. So that's one of the key reasons. If you recall, we're actually currently doing a project over at Arcola for roofing and we're taking care of some of those roofs now that was within that category of, it really needs to get done. With this time around, we've taken care of those ones. Now we're focusing, putting our attention back to the high school and get it done. And then we'll go back over to Arcola to get the rest of them done.
Dan?
I just wanted to follow up on one tiny item. And it may have been said that I really can't hear that well. Item HSVAR, the high school mechanical project, you'll see of the fifteen million or so, nine of it regard, is regarding the high school mechanical project. The plan there that we discussed was to design the balance of the mechanical work comprehensively so that the entire building mechanical systems per the FAS would be completed. But when we put it out to bid, we would bid it out with alternate packages. So as you see below, the eight point two million on the first line item, 25A, there's like a three below it, a two, and a two point seven. We'll break the project up into the different projects as alternate bids. So yes, you'll be designing the whole thing comprehensively, but, but you'll have that decision on bid day whether or not to accept all or, or none of it for that matter. It just seemed to be the prudent thing to do rather than, rather than do it piecemeal. If anyone has any questions about that.
So, so the way to look at it is the nine point one million's worst case for a spending standpoint, bid it all?
Yes.
If we just, if we come to the conclusion that we don't have an appetite for fifteen million dollars of spending next year, you can accept an alternate and reduce that amount?
Yes.
Is that the way the bids for the roofs are, the roofs are starting as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And we may even get more creative with the mechanical work. We may try to not just, we may try and handle the equipment separately, maybe purchase the equipment separately. But yes, succinctly us.
Any other questions on the list, Mr. O'Shea?
Yeah, just two other things. Has anybody done an evaluation of the full need for high school 21C, that being the bathroom? And I don't, what is the storage for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Is that the post prom?
So, 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 so the, the issue is, if you remember more than about a year ago, we sat here as a board, we actually had probably the, one of the heads of the, of the post prom, they had concern about the fact that there was a, an issue with the use of one of the bathrooms on the second floor of the high school of being used as a storage area. And based on the review of, of that, in order to address it to be a storage area properly, it was, it was determined that that area would probably cost a neighborhood of, I think it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that right?
Yes.
And that, that, that didn't include the fifty thousand dollars worth of design work that needed to get done for it. So what we, what we decided as a group is why would we spend almost three hundred thousand dollars to fix a small, about classroom-sized area for, for storage when we had, we had anticipation that we were going to talk about, you know, seven to ten thousand dollars of a renovation? But to do it, to do it properly and under fire code and a number of other issues that these guys can talk to, talk about, it was really out of reach and did not make any financial sense to do just that. So while there's certainly a need for storage, not only by post prom, but by activities, athletics, and a number of other classroom and program, programmatic needs for storage in the district, including the storage for the backpack program and, and those, those matters, it was thought that would, what would the cost of a, and I, I use the term pole building, and it may not necessarily be that, but a building that can be climate controlled where storage of athletic equipment, of post prom equipment and materials and, you know, the food for the backpack program as examples, can that be done in a more cost-effective way? And what these gentlemen had suggested, well, for probably about, you know, for five hundred thousand dollars, you can remove the modulators that are in the back of, of the high school, which are, in all fairness, they're, they're pretty nice ice. But they're, they're used and they were once used as classrooms. They're not used as classrooms today. They are used as storage. So, well, if you remove those and put a structure, whatever it's called, a pole building in there to help with the storage concerns across the entire high school campus, you know, would, would that be a better use of our money? And, and the team had thought that would be a better recommendation. That's the full, the full scope of, of all that. And this is why we are here versus recommending to you that we ought to spend three hundred thousand dollars to renovate a bathroom in the second floor of the storage.
So this is a step, separate freestanding, climate-controlled building out by the standing area, somewhere.
Yes, correct.
It's freestanding? It's not connected?
It was going to be freestanding. It was, it has to be for fire codes. It has to be off, offset from the building. All we were going to do was have a connecting link going in from the back going into it. But the, the most of, the structure was going to be completely freestanding on its own.
Freestanding. I, I'd revisit this one. I mean, I understand the need, I definitely understand the need for prom storage and things of that nature, but for half a million dollars, I mean, you've got, Arcola's sitting forty percent empty, based on your capacity study, for example. There's got to be alternatives in spending. We can talk about that later, but that's.
I appreciate the comment, but I, I can tell you that, you know, all the post prom volunteers will be here at, at the next meeting suggesting that we don't move the stuff to Arcola, only because it, it will deter from their volunteerism and the, and the ability for us to, you know, support them.
Maybe, that includes your other storage needs. When you gave, it wasn't just post prom, you'd listed athletic needs, I mean, everywhere. I mean, just relook around the building. What, what is stuff that we're just, think about my basement, there's so much stuff in there I could just get rid of and create a lot of space. Can you do that here?
Yeah, we, we actually did that about three, almost four years ago. We did an entire consolidation of, of materials that were not necessarily of being used, things that were stored on the stairwells, and we held a, we held an auction. So from cafeteria equipment to tables, desks, chairs, old TVs, things that were no longer of use by the district. So we've done that and we've done a pretty good job at cleaning that out. The stuff we're talking about now is, is not storage of stuff we don't need. It's stuff that we need at certain parts and times of the year whereby the convenience of, and location and locality are, are paramount to having it be used. So if, if the board wants us to drop that, this idea off, we can come up, try to come up another solution. But I, I really don't know what it is because storages require space. We don't have that space on that campus. May, you know, Mr. Fretz?
Yes, just to talk to that for one minute. So it's dear to my heart, you know, coming here to Methacton and seeing the issues that we've had here. You know, I'll talk about things like four by eight sheets of styrofoam that are five feet high, you know, stored in places and not just one bundle, multiple bundles. These things I'm talking about, we've moved a lot of this stuff now and are transporting it between Autobahn and Arcola at times where we've cleared out and have things ready to go that if we have such a sale at some point in time, some of the things that you would say that were in your basement and it's time to get rid of, we're ready to do that. But there are things, like many things here that are still required for many programs where people from, through teachers throughout the year want to have access to those things and they, that we spend good money on those things and we want to be able to have access to them and be able to protect them. Not stuck in the boiler room where it's a fire hazard because you have flammable things in there, not stuck in places that are inappropriate. You know, we've gone through buying shelves that, that you've supported, which I thank you for, that we've now placed in lots of our buildings to try to first be organized as best as we can in the spaces that we have. Now, certainly, there's always room for improvement and we're doing that all the time, but I certainly do believe that we have a need for more storage space here.
Any other, any other comments? And we will certainly look at this if the board doesn't want us to pass this as part of the, the projects we put out the bid, then, you know, we'll make that decision possibly next week and we can, we can deal with it in another way. Any other questions on the, on the, on the entire list?
I just wanted to get an understanding real quick of, so where it says work will be scheduled for 2021, when you add up those amounts as six million, is that, we're borrowing only half that amount? I guess six, are we looking to do fourteen thou, fourteen million minus six million for next year's work? And then six million for, so we're breaking it apart? So it's not really fourteen million, we're bidding it out for fourteen million, but the work isn't going to be done except, separated out?
Yes.
Correct?
Jim?
It's really going to be dependent on when the funds are needed for the project, is when we borrow it.
I guess my question is said borrowing, just how much are we, do we need to look into for borrowing this?
It's going to be dependent on the timing. If they say 2021, we probably would not have to borrow that because we're going to be doing a calendar year. So are they talking 2020, 21, 2020, 2021? I'd have to know the exact dates as to when the borrowing occurs. Our borrowings are calendar years where the school year, the fiscal year, the school year doesn't match.
Any other questions to my left? No, hop to my right. Mr.?
In regards to Eagleville, will this one point one million dollars fix all of the issues that we're having with the exterior of that building? Or is there still more work to be done for Eagleville beyond this?
The cost that we have at this moment in time is just to do the repairs relative, so around each of the windows, et cetera, we'll be doing some repairs. We are actually doing an investigation at this moment in time to see what else is in behind the walls and what other issues that we may have. So this cost may go up to the next tier, depending on what we find.
Okay. So you're looking at what's known now is the one point one, depending on what you find behind that would be up to the one point five where you then.
That is correct.
Replace instead of repair.
That is correct.
Thank you. And I did have some of the same questions that Brian did around the 21C. If we could just get some ideas of what that building or structure looks like, what clubs or activities would be using that in square footage, just a general idea of what it looks like.
Just.
I don't think there's any need to take it off the table now, as long as we know what it looks for, that's what people are looking for. I mean, I think that's fine. The one question I do have though is because this comes up at least once a year, is the reinstall a restroom? And I'm sure it's going to come up again, is we hear the stories of locked bathrooms already?
Mm-hmm.
So are there still locked bathrooms that aren't being used? So do we really need to do anything with this room? Or can we just close this off and spend no money on here? I mean, I'd hate to put in another bathroom which we may not use or would be locked for some particular reason. And again, that's, that's hearsay. That could be completely not true, but I can tell you every single year, there's at least one or two people that bring that item up.
As far as I can say, the only reason why a bathroom is locked here is because for some reason we had an issue that it had to be closed for a period of time and that could be, you know, a number of this, different reasons. But the, as far as the upstairs restroom, the principal has indicated that he would like to have that back. You know, for us to go back and put that, reinstall that bathroom is a matter of putting the fixtures in, putting new fixtures in there and partitions up because the piping, supplies, and the drain lines are all existing in that, in that room. So.
He was at a meeting of, Dr. Zorgini was in a meeting, and I was clearly him saying that it was the only area where a bathroom, people could have access to. The closest bathroom was farther away, if I, if I'm correct. And he just.
Yes, there's a distance issue. It's not that they don't have access to other bathrooms, but they have to go much further than they would with any other wing of, of the building.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
If there are, yeah.
I just want to, so when you're looking at the numbers, just to try and get it, right now, the way the numbers are set up for the fourteen point nine million dollars is all the work's done next summer. So if we push those out and do them in phases, yes, the numbers are changing, some of the costs are also changing associated with that side. The borrowing of, if you do 25C and 25D and 26C in 2021, yes, we would push that off. But the way it's designed right now, that would be all next year.
Sorry, one last thing. I wouldn't say thank you because I think that this is exactly what we should be doing, putting more on the table that's out there for bids and then pairing it back. Because for the last two years, I was very disappointed in the fact that we borrowed for money for projects. We didn't get them bid in time, they didn't, they came back higher than we did, and we wound up just having money sitting there when we have the master plan, we know it's coming. So I do think that this is exactly the right way to go. So thank you very much.
No problem. If there are no other questions? Mr. Navaret?
Yeah. He said he could see and hear us, but he did ask me to move the mouse and I, nothing happened when I did that.
There's a couple of things that got pushed off from this summer because of the timing of the bidding. We wanted to make sure we have the opportunity to do it next summer, given then the fact, two, that we have, we have borrowed less in the last couple of years than we anticipated it does, where we've actually improved our debt situation in the last two years. This gives us an opportunity to catch up and they are certainly when we talk about the high school MEP projects and the roofs, kind of the core projects that we've been talking about. The other thing, I forget my other comment now, the other comment was about, now I don't remember what it was after all the TV stuff, so let's, I'll yield back.
And then I guess, would you go over the agenda items that are listed under the master plan section?
Yep, just let me go and get them.
Budget under nine E.
We have a change order, change order EC 001 and M 001. This is for the MEP contractors that are currently carrying out the MEP work to this building. Hence the reason why no air conditioning at this moment in time, which I can, as an update, the cooling tower is going to be installed, going to be put up onto the roof tomorrow. So we're getting closer. We have here, it primarily revolves around Tri-County Mechanical. The facilities assessment study stated that we needed to install our clean agent system in the mechanical room, in the data closet, sorry. So when the mechanics, when mechanical engineer went around, he saw that there was a, there was a clean agent system in that room already. So he went to the next data closet and designed a clean agent system for that other because he thought, oh, this one's already got one, I'll put, design one for this room. So what happened was when we found that out, after the bids went out, we went and they reviewed it with the administration and we said that mechanic, that data closet does not require, that data closet does not require the clean agent. So therefore this is the credit coming back for that clean agent system being eliminated over at Woodland Elementary. AGM Electrical had a portion of that work as well, so they went and gave us a credit for that work, for related to that, along with there was ductwork dampers that required to be closed in case of the dry system engaging. So we had to include for additional, we get additional addressable modules to include for that. So that's what those two change orders are related for, AGM and Tri-County Mechanical. The other items, items three through seven is all related to the 2020 work. What we're doing is we're looking to come to you to move forward with designs for, to get this work put out on the street for October and going into November for bidding. The first item is AEM Architects and the amount of 10,000, that's, we brought them on board to carry out the emergency egress plan to a study to evaluate exactly what needed to be done there. When we finished reviewing the study, we established that we wanted, needed to install additional doors to partition the building off, to facilitate closing off sections of the building when the likes of the gymnasium, et cetera, are being occupied. That's the proposal for doing that portion of work. Then we have another proposal from AEM and that is to carry out the design, the bid and the administration of the egress plan and security study, going through the, again, put it, creating the documents, meeting with the admin, meeting with the administration, meeting with the township to make sure they are comfortable with how the work progresses and then implement and design the system and put it out onto the street. Item number five is looking to go with more engineering and that is to move forward with projects two through five for a fee of 5% of the project, which comes out to a not-to-exceed Next item is Sobek Roofing. This is where, just as I mentioned earlier, we were going to design for replacing all the remaining degraded roofs. The last item is more engineering again for a cost of 9,200. We brought more engineering in to do the high school, to do an assessment of where things stood with the humidity controls in the building and now we're looking to do that same study in four other buildings. And that's what we're putting forward for proposal.
Thank you, James. Are there any questions from members of the board on the items listed on the agenda? Mr. Ryan?
Just one clarification item. For number six on the agenda-
Yes.
It's the Mark Sobek for all the D remaining roofs, so the 85,806. How is that different than the amount that we just looked at for the master plan 2020 where it says 26A, design and bid of all remaining D rated roofs?
That's the soft, the soft cost is not only the data design cost, that includes for the, if we move forward with the project, it would be including costs for administration of the project, including ourselves, as well as permit fees, along with the contingency for any change orders.
Any questions, Mr. Michal?
So on that project, so the 85,000 is for the design for all of the roofing projects listed?
Yep.
So if we decide not to do all the roofing projects, whatever piece, just they put up on a shelf and it's not throwaway work?
It's not throwaway work.
And that's the same holds true for the MEP work at the high school?
That is correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Mr. Navarrette?
Yeah, can you hear me now? All right, I got a job with Verizon. Yeah, this is my comment from earlier about the master plan work, just to build on what Mike said, what we've asked for Davey to do is to come back for the September Property Committee meeting with a, with an amended master plan for the next three to five years that looks at what we would, how we would revise the master plan, given the fact that the plan as it exists now includes work in Arrowhead for the next, you know, two, three, four, five years. So how would we, how would we revamp the work that we would be scheduled to do? And then also how do we prioritize that work in case the board doesn't have an appetite while we do something major at Arrowhead to do the full work identified from the facility study? So again, to give us options for how we plan for the future.
So question, question on that. So is the master, is it going to be done assuming with and without a new Arrowhead? So if a new Arrowhead is put in the mix, you can get a sense of what gets pushed out to the right?
Yeah, the idea being there is, I want to say the number was around, and don't quote me on this, but there was a couple million dollars worth of work scheduled for Arrowhead in, I think, 2020 and 2021, and then a smaller number in the next, in '22 and '23. So the idea would be what other work, in place of that, what other work would we want to move forward? And then the prioritization would be if we wanted to defer any of that work, what would be the things that we should focus on first and then move out anything else that we didn't want to do? But at least give us the option so we could prioritize.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller? If not, thank you, Mr. Miller. That ends the presentations for this evening. We would then, on the July 23 meeting, we would have a check presentation from the Education Foundation and Mr. Booker will be providing a transportation update. There will be reports from the various committees and there is one personnel advertisement as listed there. The board meetings minutes would be approved and then we'd have fiscal items. Mr. Booker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. For next week, the approval for the board will be the list of bills, the treasurer's report. There are no budgetary transfers, they're not allowed until October of this year. However, we are asking the board to approve budgetary transfers through the 2018, 2019 fiscal year as required by the fiscal year audit. The business office will supply all budgetary changes to the school board at the September 2019 meeting. We'll also have the Keystone Realty Group contract renewal, this is the company that currently does the appeals for the school district and obviously the 2019 master plan project as already discussed.
Please know that the, I believe the finance committee requested, you know, a, I'll call it a status update on the work that the Realty Group has, Keystone Realty had previously done. So I know Mr. Booker is working on that with that firm to get you that data, hopefully in advance of the actions requested for next week. Are there any other questions for Mr. Booker on financial items?
Just a comment that, that I made at the finance committee meeting regarding the Keystone Realty contract renewal. There's a couple of points in the contract as I read it that really kind of heavily favor Keystone that I had concerns with. One is the section relating to, and it's on page four of six, relating to phased-in or multi-year negotiated settlements. The way the language in the agreement, the way I interpret the language is that if we negotiate a settlement whereby the taxpayer, it results in an increase in assessment in the taxpayer, but we agree to phase that in over time, where the early years are a lower level of increase and the later years that are at a higher level of the increase, Keystone gets their 25% on the first year at the higher assessed value, even though the district might not collect the full amount of that cash. And then in the later years, when it increases to offset that, the district ends up getting a saving amount of money or whatever the term is of that negotiated settlement, of a phased-in settlement. But Keystone seems like they're getting a higher amount on both ends, the early years and later years, which I think would lead to them getting more than 25% as stated in the agreement, if I'm reading it properly. Now I understand that the response was that Keystone won't change it, so I'm just making the board aware of that. And then the other thing is that if we terminate the agreement, they're getting paid for any work they have done, whether or not the district receives any money on an increased assessed value or not. So if we, if the district terminates the agreement and they've got hours into a particular project, they're getting paid for the work whether they've done, whether or not it's completed or not. So those are the two concerns, my head agreement and the agreement. The biggest concern is that the language relating to phased-in settlements where they really kind of benefit on both sides of it, where the district does not see any real benefit of that, of the increased assessed values.
Any other, any other comments on that matter or any other fiscal matters as Mr. Booker has shared? If not, we'll move on to personnel items. Mr. Gina, as you've noticed, is not here this evening, so I will go on to address those matters. There's a resignation for your approval, job descriptions as listed, there is an employment of a professional, looks like there is a change of status for classified, there is an uncompensated leave for professional, uncompensated leave for classified and supplemental contracts and volunteer approval list, as well as compensation adjustment. Please note that on page six of seven, the compensation adjustment, we'd be rewarded to make sure that it says effective July 1 of 2019. Appears that I missed putting the number one in there. Are there any questions on the matters of personnel?
I have a couple. On the supplemental summer, I would imagine that a lot of this is very needed and important. I would imagine counseling is working on scheduling and placement and nurses are doing whatever, but I would, and it doesn't have to be now, like a little more information because between flex days and everything, I just, I would, this is a large amount of money and I don't necessarily agree with how my district does it, but they got rid of a lot of this. I used to do a ton of summer work and now I got, there hasn't been summer work for teachers in a long time. I don't, I would assume a lot of this is not ESY because we've already done that. I would imagine the office assistants have to come in a little early. I would imagine that some of this, and maybe all of it, is very needed, but I would like to look into this because it seems like a pretty high number.
I will, I will apprise Mr. Gina of the need for further detail and see if he can't provide something in writing in my Friday, for my Friday memo for the board to, to hear.
And it's not that I will not approve it, I just, for the future, I would also, I would just like to know more. And as far as the fall coaches, I know we talked about evaluations being done and things like that and there's also been talk about different structure of athletic director and house principals at the high school. So I would just like to know if all of these returning coaches who are very, very, very valuable, I just would like to know if all those evaluations have been completed and what the status is on that since we are, I mean, there's very few vacancies, which is great. I know there's, you know, always some and I'm sure we're working on it, but yeah, I would like some update of those evaluations.
We can do that. Any other questions on matters of personnel?
My like clarification was I thought according to the contract, IEP writing, they get three days to do IEP writing. Are we approving it for next school year? It says summer IPs for them to start their school year. I thought they, I wasn't sure how that worked.
So any, any students that have been identified during the summer, we have 30 days to write an IEP and get it into place for the start of the school year. So we have IEP writers that are dedicated over the summer to help with that work. Okay.
I guess the same thing with, we're giving a supplemental contract for curriculum writing. It's my same thought as Ms. Reese is saying, we're providing them opportunity and this, you know, I just want, just clarification, just going over maybe during education committee just to review it.
So for example, like what, what areas are they writing curriculum for of that nature? We can provide that additional detail.
Yeah, I can, I can provide that for you, but they, they don't have time during the school year to write curriculum, so.
And I figured that as well, I do know that, but I also imagine that maybe next summer this might be different if we have the, we have two new curriculum supervisors. I know teachers want to be involved, but it's just something I would like to look deeper into for.
Well, we certainly can get the details of what all these are, so that'll help, you know, put some context around, you know, this or greater ability, but if there's some, you know, additional things that we think we ought to change, you know, we're going to have to have different conversations. Yeah, okay. Any other matters of personnel? Mr. Michal?
Item H3, is this a replacement position?
The secretary to the assistant principal was Josie Maddie, who has retired.
So the answer is yes?
The answer is yes. I'm just trying, I'm thinking out loud.
We could note that, we do that in the two previous ones. Just put that in there. All right, and then item I1, or actually, you only had them under I. Are those dates correct?
I will confirm that.
Okay. And then I had the same question under I, I'm sorry, L3 regarding summer work. We get some additional information. And then I4, similar question, information on what's being done here and how the new curriculum supervisors factor into this. And that was it. Thanks.
We'll try to provide those in the Friday memo. Any other personnel questions? If not, we'll move on to matters of curriculum and programs. We don't have anything on the agenda. Under policy, our 12, there will be eight policies for your consideration up for second reading and approval for next week. Are there any questions on the policies that are listed?
I have one, and I apologize, I didn't catch it last meeting. I think I was too preoccupied on the budget. The class size policy, where we go five to eight at 30. You know, I, I struggle with that because we always break out five to six as upper elementary and seven, eight as secondary. And I know it's always brought up about reducing a teacher in five, six. And if the, you know, the policy's there, and I know it's just a guideline, but I, I don't know why five, six is included with seven, eight. And I worry about that because every year it's brought up, oh, do we decrease a teacher at the five, six? And that makes me nervous because my, yeah.
So I will say that was not something that was changed in this revision of the policy. The Policy Committee members can correct me on this, but I believe the only change was to, to put into policy our current practice of limiting K to two, to 22 students. But other than that, the rest of the policy remained untouched.
Okay, can we revisit it or not? Or we can, we take it off and revisit it? I don't really want 30 as our policy for five, six. And I apologize for not catching this sooner. It just slipped, it slipped the cracks for me. And I don't, I don't know, I mean, I'm not trying, you know, I don't know if I like 30 for five, six when it's considered elementary.
It's certainly your prerogative when it comes time to vote next week. And if there's other board members that share this concern, I mean, this would be the time to discuss it, and then you can vote accordingly next week. So if anybody else has concerns about this policy.
I will say at the meeting, it was, that was not the area that we were focused on within the changes that we were making.
Thrilled to see the changes. I just know, I remember being on policy. So I know how detail oriented you are, so I just know sometimes I, I read them over when they have more, more to do with education because that's more of my forte. And so I read it more closely, and I would vote against it.
Mr. Navaret?
Yeah, I'll, I'll support what Andrew is saying. I agree 30 is a lot, five to six. We've talked about it before in previous years as this comes up. So maybe it is time to break out five, six different than seven, eight in this policy, make it match what we actually do in reality.
I would suggest, how about leaving this policy as it is? That gets codified, our current practice of K to two with 22 students, which I agree with. Five to six, I have no idea. I think it requires further review. I think it requires a look at possibly what other districts do. Have there been studies about class size at the grade five, six level? And I think there's a lot more homework that would need to be done as opposed to just make a change now and put it back into a first read and run it through the process. So approving it as is, I don't think there's anything that would preclude a second look at it. It could be put right back in the Policy Committee. We could direct the administration to take a look at class size at five, six and determine what the best approach is and what's been our past practice. I mean, do we generally have 30 kids in five to six? Or do we have a similar guideline? We have K to two where it's 28, or I don't know what, I have no idea. I don't know what historically our class size have been at that grade level. And I think it requires a lot more work than just, you know. But that might be a better approach to take as opposed to just rejecting this change from 25 to 22 for K to two.
I'm comfortable. I just, I would like it revisited. What I get nervous at is, you know, my, not to get into politics, but my term is up in December if I'm not reelected. And I, I feel uncomfortable leaving it at 30 if someone takes this seat and then says, "Let's keep it at 30." And our poor fifth and sixth graders are, four more kids are added to their class size, and a teacher's taken away. That's kind of where I am.
Yeah, the same thing would happen going the other way. I mean, you could change it to 25 next week, come December, it's back to 30. You don't know, so.
I was just gonna, I support to take another look at the class size breaking out five, six as well.
I will suggest this, that I think Mr. Earnshaw had probably the best recommendation. What I mean by that is, A, pass what you have, that gets done and it becomes policy. And then the board asked the Policy Committee to look at the five, six, which would likely, as you said, I mean, the administration would do a review and get you some data. And then we could then update the policy of another, which would be, at the best, it'd be another, you know, three months from now.
I'm comfortable with that.
All right, any other matters related to policy? If not, we'll go on to other. There is some transportation, so approve the list of third-party transportation vendors as listed. Approve the first student employee roster as attached. And the last item is approve the bus stops. The board has received a list. You may not have been able to fully review that list just yet, but it is not one that we will provide to the public for safety reasons. And, you know, we will ask for your approval on all three of those items at next week's meeting. So far, are there any questions on any of those items? Mr. Ryan?
I have a question about the bus stops because I know sometimes it comes up about bus stop placement, you know, that they're not in a great place. So are, are the list of bus stops that we received and looked at similar to previous year's bus stops? Or do we have a sense of changes in certain bus stops? I just was wondering about that.
They're very similar to the ones last year. Anyone that has any concerns with the bus stops, there's an evaluation process. The first process is to have someone from the safety group down in First Student go out and evaluate the site for safety. Then depending on the outcome of that, we can either make a change or we can say that the site's been given to safe. If the parent decides that they don't agree with our position, we then escalate to the District Six Engineering Department for PennDOT, who will come out and do a site evaluation. But we've done that, I think, two times since I've been here. And then the outcome of that would then dictate what we would do. The two outcomes so far that have occurred, they've supported that the stops were safe. May not be convenient for the parent and where they wanted them, but they are safe.
And when a, if a parent asks for a change and the change is granted, then that is the standing bus stop then going forward? It doesn't revert back to?
No, it would not revert back.
Okay, it's an ongoing bus stop at that time for that student as long as they're?
The only reason it may change, if it's deemed unsafe, obviously we wouldn't go back to it. The only reason a bus stop may change is by the graduating students moving up. There may be a better location. Sorry, I'm two times in a row, kind of flying. There might be a better location for picking up more students. So it may have been one person that had a house stop because they were the only person at the stop. Now there are six other kids, and it's going to be at the corner.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the transportation?
On transportation, Tim. A much more comfortable position than two years ago around bus drivers. But I feel like that bus driver thing snuck up on us in the summer again a couple of years ago. So I appreciate that you provide us the number that First Union keeps us updated on the number of drivers, number of backup drivers, et cetera. Usually the turnover, my understanding, happens like the 25th of August. So what insurances do we have that we will have the proper roster of drivers? We're approving this roster, but I imagine most of these people are the ones driving at the end of, middle of June. And we'll probably have a dozen, 15, 20 swap out. So can you just give an update of where we are in First Student with drivers?
Sure. The list that was provided from Dispatch, because the site manager was away, on this has 104 drivers. We're planning on 94 routes. They did change the practice of when people are retiring. By us moving the school year into August, their ability would be to resign August 1st and get the school year. The whole thing was, came around benefits. So they would resign at August 1st, and they would get that month's worth of benefits and not have to start the school year. Bidding is going to be occurring. I think we had one driver that did retire last year, and that was about it that I can recall off the top of my head.
Any other questions regarding the transportation? Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I just had one, since it is on the agenda, it looks like, for next week. Unfortunately, it won't be here. But will the full rundown of the transportation happen next week in terms of number of buses, students on the bus, and all of that?
We actually started preparing that information today and going through it. We have some changes that we're going to be working with First Student on. When Karen gets back, she's actually on vacation this week, she's back Monday. And depending on the changes in the time, I hope to get a report out through the board on Monday.
Okay, and that will be part of next week's presentation as well, or?
Yes.
Okay. Because I just, this is one of those things, which is legally required, right? We're legally are required to approve the bus stops? Because the board gets basically a list of just locations. So it really means nothing to us until we see what the routes look like and things like that.
Right, right. The routes will give you the, the information will give you on the routes. And in reviewing it, again, one of the things that changed this year that I think is important to note is they're really working on a two-tier system versus a three-tier system. So a high school and an elementary, a high school and a Skyview, a high school and an Arcola, so that they're not overextending themselves on those rides. Right now, what we can do is a high school, Arcola, a Skyview. And the buses really don't, you know, even though it sounds like a 10-minute ride, that 10-minute ride is, is a problem. So what we've been really working, Karen's really been working on is Arcola and an elementary school, a high school and Skyview and an elementary school. So there will be some three tiers, but for the most part, they're really trying to keep them at a two-tier. That'll free up drivers in the afternoon also to run sports trips. That should smooth out some of the things that we've been working through.
Thank you.
Any final questions? Who we got? Two more, Mr. Earnshaw?
Regarding the transportation vendors, are any of those new for this school year?
Don't think any of them are new from last year that we used. Let me just open it up just to verify that. Now, the only one that we added, which have not, we've been entered, have not used is that Seg School Bus Transportation. We did try and get bids from them. They not provided anything that was substantial over the time to even see if we could entertain them and see what they would do. So it's added as an option, but it's not something that we typically would ever expect to use.
All right, but do we have, do we have a contract with them already? Is that already in place?
We don't have any runs with them, so there's no contract.
No runs, okay, but if you did do a run with them, you'd have to put a contract.
We'd put a contract, okay.
And then regarding the employee roster for a student, does the district get confirmation regarding that they've checked their driving records, have done background checks and all the other clearances?
That's an annual.
It's an annual, so that happens and gets done before the school year?
So there's, there's a list of annual in the contract, there's a list of annual reports that they have to provide to us, and they provide that to HR.
Okay. And then if anything changes during the year, does First Student get notified? I don't know how that works, I mean.
So First Student does random drug tests. So if someone has an issue, they're immediately rendered. I think that's what you're looking for. I don't know if?
I don't know if there's a notification, like if a driver gets their license suspended for whatever reason. Does First Student get notified this date? I don't know how that process works.
I wouldn't be able to answer that question. I'd have to find out for you.
All right, so I have just quick questions. One is, I like that two-tier versus three-tier because the late arrival of the buses to the elementary school, that was a high complaint area for some time. Also, did you send out letters already for the people to opt out for transportation? I know we were going to send it to private schools, but then also high school to just kind of reduce the amount of timing. And then the other one was, don't we typically run the routes also physically do running other, running the routes, routes?
Okay, so first one, non-pub and parochial schools were sent our contact information. They're supposed to supply us with their calendar and updated contact information. Some of the contact information we have, obviously, still related, a lot of people change jobs. So we've received almost everyone back on that. Typically, everyone that would provide in transportation has. They were also provided our Act 372 form requesting transportation. So those individuals at those schools that send in a request for transportation will be routed. Those that do not send in the request for transportation will not be routed. Very similar to what we did last year, except we just routed everyone and pulled them off afterwards to be sure. With regards to the high school, the student parking, anyone that opted out, and there was well over 100 of them last I saw, and they're still in the process of pulling them off. There was, they've all been collected as they paid and handed down to transportation. So they're now removing them from the stops, and they'll start rerouting those. If it pulls off a stop, then the bus, obviously, the times will change. For the most part, I think it's just removing riders off because there's brothers and sisters also using the stuff, and they're not going to, can't have them opt out also.
Yes, Mr. Ryan?
One last question. The Eagleville Road, do we have an update on the capability of being open for school?
We do not have an update. There's a scheduled meeting for either the 30th or 30th post for a conversation about the stats. Any other questions? If not, I'll turn the meeting back over to the Board President for dates and board members' calendar, old business, new business, and so forth.
All right, thank you, Dr. Zerby. Sorry, I lost my place in the agenda here. Thank you. So we have our regular slate of meetings here for the next couple of months. Do we have any old business that needs to be discussed this evening? Mr. Ryan?
Just one quick follow-up from last month, where there was questions that were asked to the solicitor in regards to the Audivant school property. I was wondering if we could get a board update for the questions that were asked there.
We'll follow up with the solicitor and get that. Anything else for old business?
Just curious, do, other than the August one, is there any executive sessions that I? There is nothing other than August right now? Or are we on for next week? Or did we kind of?
You should check your calendar invite.
Okay, I'll double check. I might have missed something, okay.
Yep. Anything else for old business? New business? All right, courtesy of the floor, Mr. Andrews.
Before you start the clock, John Andrews Law of Providence.
Before you start the clock, John Andrews Law Providence, a community item that on July 3, Howard Jones, a former director, passed. It was a sudden medical thing, and he was a director both in the 1990s and early in this decade. So listening to the discussion of the KCBA presentation, it came across clearly to me that virtually none of you on the board are currently thinking of building a new school. That's progress. Relative to renovation, I think the architect, KCBA, made a strong claim that you, that's not the wise decision from many aspects. And, no, I think relative to that, as time goes on, you may come around on that issue. For instance, if you get enrollment projections, regarding enrollment projections, not only in, relative to births in 2018, not only are they down at the state level, they're down at the county level 1 percent. So it'd be very surprising if, if births in Methak, in the Methacton District are more than 270 for last year, where Malone and McBroom had been projecting a number like 320. I gave a talk at the June meeting at Arrowhead about Arrowhead being a sham, and at the two subsequent June meetings, I spoke to various aspects of that, and this evening, I'd like to speak in the time allocated relative to full-day kindergarten. And I'll follow that up with a emailing of a seven-page document that I completed today. Full-day kindergarten is not needed here, among other reasons, because for half-day kindergarten, the PSSA scores in grade three are higher here and in a number of other districts in the county relative to the school districts that have full-day kindergarten. That's both for ELA and for math. And I've also looked at every school district in Delaware County, the same applies there, and there's been no changes from half-day to full-day kindergarten in the last four or five years in Delaware County. In Delaware County and in Bucks County, there, there are districts that have selective full-day kindergarten. For instance, they may have 200 students in the AM half-day class, 200 students in the afternoon half-day class, and maybe 30 or 40 in full-day kindergarten. There doesn't appear to be much of that in this county, but I think it's something that is an option, and it's an option that was favored by former director Brenda Hackett. I think it should be investigated further. If we only have to add two or three rooms for selective full-day kindergarten, that's, that eases up our facility spending quite appreciably.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? I have a motion to adjourn. There we go, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.